Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 meeting. First on our agenda, I'm just going to take roll call of who's present. Just say, "Present," if you're here. Amanda?
Present.
Alin? Virtual? No, Alin's not here. Peter?
Present.
Alex?
Present.
Present. Paul?
Here.
Tracy?
Present.
Paula? Present. All right, so, no, and Alex is virtual. All right. Opening statement. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand, and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. One, state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. Seeing none. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda are approval-not-required plans, also called A&R plans, underneath the subdivision control law for which we have none. All right. Our next item is minor site plans for which there is one this evening at 72 to 80 Franklin Road, actually 491 Electric Avenue, applicant proposing the use of a church in an existing storefront of 1,875 square feet located within Park Hill Plaza, which is zone commercial. Is the applicant here this evening?
Hello?
Yes, sir. Are you here for this, for that proposal?
Is anyone here to have a seat there?
Yes.
But don't you have a moment?
Okay, you can either come up and sit at the microphone, or stand, whichever you feel comfortable.
Bear with me for one second, I will pull up...
Let's see.
I think this might be the most helpful. Whoops. This was a kind of a summary of the space and unit. This is one of the few things attached to the application.
So, could you summarize what it is you're looking to do or use the space for? And how many people? What the times of the day you'd be using it for during peak times?
So, we will be using the local, to the Haitian church, Communitarian Church at the place. So, that time we will be using right now is Sunday, Sunday morning, and Monday, Monday morning and Thursday afternoons.
Sunday mornings and?
Sunday morning, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the afternoon. And then Monday morning, 7:00, 7:00 to 12:00. And then Thursday night, 6:00 to 9:00 service.
What we actually do need, because this is a site plan review, is we actually need a site plan, so, of the parking area. And we actually, we also need to know, the parking is determined for religious purposes off the number of seats.
Okay.
And pull that up underneath our zoning code. So, we need to know how many, like, how many seats or how many people are going to be in attendance.
So, right now, we really don't have an exact number, because we just opened a couple weeks ago. So, we don't really have an idea maybe we'll be in yet. I don't know. Any two months or so, if we can come in, can give a number of how many people will be in this, in the church.
You're gonna have to give us a best guess, though. I'm just saying, some of that...
Right now, so, so far, I would say, far enough, we say like 10 people right now.
Because it's, it's one parking space for each five seats. Where benches are used, one space for each 10 linear feet of bench. Where no fixed seats are used, like, as in a museum, for each 100 square feet of public floor area, there shall be one parking space. So, that's the criteria we have to go off of, going for how many parking spaces are necessary for what is you're intending to do.
And I would say, when you're, when you're working out this math, it's not as important what you have now, it's as, the most important figure is what you hope to have for a congregation in that space.
Right, your design.
Because we're gonna plan for how many total you're allowed in that space.
Okay.
Right. So, think about that.
Okay.
But also, on the site plan, we understand that the plaza was sold maybe a year or two ago, so there's a new owner. So, we're looking for a site plan that lays out, there's, I think, 18 commercial units there. So, when we evaluate a site plan, we have to look at all the uses that are in the plaza.
Okay.
We look at, like, I just read to you what it is for religious purposes?
Yes.
Or how you calculate. So, depending on the type of business, retail, restaurant, things like that, the parking's different. So, then we have to look at all the businesses, add up all the parking, to make sure all the parking is accommodated for availability in the parking lot.
Okay.
Space. So, we need to, we need, we need the, pretty much, request the owner to provide the parking plan for the plaza.
Okay.
With, with all of the business spaces laid out, how much square footage for each of the units, and then what the type of business is, and to figure out the parking spaces. So, then we can say all of the parking is met.
Okay.
Or not met. So, that's what we look at when we're looking at the site, when we're looking at the site plan. We're also looking at traffic flow and safety of the, of the parking area and the entrances and exits, which I think we'll have, need to have a conversation with the owner because of Franklin Road on that side. But, but for the, for the, for the first part is, we need a actual, we need a site plan.
Okay.
For that.
All right, thank you.
So, we acknowledge that you want to, and you're allowed to go into that space, but we have to determine the review, the parking availability for that with all of the mixed uses going on, and, and how the traffic's going to flow. It's like, if you're expecting, like, on Sundays, 50 people, 30 cars, where are those cars gonna be? What else is going on on Sundays for those other businesses? Is the parking available for that, when there's like a peak demand?
Okay.
And it could be that it's offset, but we have to, has to show that, yes, it's still because, you know, the other businesses are closed during that time, so there's available parking.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Something like that.
It gets complicated when you're one, like, you're one person in that space, but we need to know the whole site. We need to know how many spaces Obershon takes up, and how many spaces Subway takes up, and we need that math.
Okay.
To know how many spaces are available for you, so that we can say it's okay for you to go there. But without seeing that plan, we have no way of knowing.
Okay.
So, you'll probably have to coordinate with the property owner to show the site plan and the, the total number of spaces, and these are how many you're gonna use.
Okay.
And then you can figure out, like, what we talked about, how many you think you're gonna need based upon your demand, what you expect. Once you're, you know, hopefully you're very successful, and once you're full up, this is how many spaces we need, then we can do the math based upon that.
Okay. So, okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, we look at 1,875 square feet. It's like, some of that might be storage, some of, but it's like, how many seats are you proposing to do once you're built out there to accommodate? So, then we go off of that.
Okay.
Aspect of that.
When I figured out, what should I bring in? Because I was not prepared for that.
What's that?
I was not prepared for, for the parking thing, so I will figure it out and everything. What should I bring them? The papers?
So, we will be looking for that submission. The question is if, depending on whether or not it's above or below 10 parking spaces, depends on the type of site plan, and depends if there's any modifications that need to be made to the site plan, if there's anything extra that has to come about. But we, the board can look at a couple of things. We can look at continuing this as a minor site plan. Again, if it's about 10 spaces, it's gonna be major site plan, so then they'll have to reapply for the hearing aspect. If it goes above, if it hits 10 spaces, then we have to just advertise it differently for, to hold a public hearing aspect. And it could also involve a special permit, depending on whether or not there's any relief from parking or land or landscaping requirements for the parking area. So, if the parking lot doesn't meet certain criteria, then they're looking for relief or waivers from that. So, to know to grant that, there's just a process to do that when we evaluate it. So, at least for next time, we're looking for something for that, for that site plan. And if you could provide us with the contact information that you have for the owner, I think that would be helpful, because we can also reach out to let him know what it is we're looking for, and that will probably help you too.
Okay.
That's...
I think your question was, "Who do you contact?" Is that what you asked?
Yes.
Our principal planner, Chantel Fleck, at the end of the desk, you can go to City Hall, and you can ask for the planner's office and track her down that way, or via phone number and email, which are on the city's website, for the principal planner.
All right, go. Thank you so much.
And then, so the board needs to take an action this evening?
Yeah, so, it's, it's important, I want him to understand, too, that, so, because of the way site plans work, we only, we, we have to make a decision in a certain amount of time.
Yes, sir.
So, we have X amount of days. For now, it's not a problem. We can continue it to next month, if that's what you want to do, kind of leave this open. If you think it's gonna take a while to get a site plan, which it might, if you have an engineer involved, it might, or if the property owner has an engineer involved, it might take some time, you might want to just pull back and say, "I'll come back to you when I have everything." So, what we can do now, because I know this has been thrown on you and you're, you're not prepared, so, rightfully so, I wouldn't expect you to know, we can say, "We'll continue it to next month, but next month, if you're not ready, we either have to deny it, or we have to, you have to ask us to withdraw it, to pull it away until you're ready, and then we can open it back up in the future whenever you have everything, you know, ready to go."
All right.
So, I just want to tell you, so for now, I'm not gonna put a decision on you, because I know you, you're, you know, I don't want to overwhelm you. We can continue it for at least a month, but next month, if we don't hear from you, we have to deny it, because we don't have, we don't have a site plan to approve. The whole thing we need, we need, we need a plan showing all the parking and the site and the property. We don't have that to approve. We need that before we go any further.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to continue it till our next meeting.
Second? Motion has made with a second to continue to our next meeting. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. We'll take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. Continue. All right. We are on to the public hearing segment this evening. We have underneath the Scenic Road Act, a joint hearing with the Planning Board and Tree Warden. Who's our tree warden this evening? Will consider a tree cutting proposal for a large tree to be limbed, as it poses a danger to the right-of-way and the location of 239 Mount Elam Road, across from the Cogswell Park entrance. It's continued from our May meeting. Good evening.
Good evening.
Almost deserves an applause.
I would...
I'm glad we have someone finally.
Please state your name for the record.
James Barnold, Director of Parks and Recreation and Tree Warden for the City of Pittsburgh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
I looked around, and I was like, "Oh, wow, all these people are here for me."
See that?
Limb.
All right.
All right, so this...
Let me get some pictures up here. Hold on.
This is 239 Mount Elam Road. So, for those folks, this is a joint hearing, so we, with the Tree Warden and the Planning Board, because it's, Mount Elam Road is a scenic road, and any tree removal requires hearing with the tree, under the Tree Warden and the Planning Board. So, we just hold it jointly in order to accomplish both.
Just bear with me for a second. All the pictures are sideways, I gotta turn them all around here. All right. Okay.
And it hasn't fallen yet, so this is good.
Yeah, that's very...
All right. So, let's, I believe this is the tree in question, and we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, James, we're talking about the, the overhanging?
Yeah, the overhanging limb.
Yep. And we have more photos here, it's the wrong way, sorry. Same thing. And that's the other photo, and that's, I suppose, looking at, that must be, what, 260, 239, that house, I assume, as a point of reference?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. The petition says in front of 239, so...
And it is just, it's just limbing the tree.
It's just limbing the tree, yes.
Does any board member have any questions?
Is the general health of the tree okay? Or is it, it doesn't look really, it really is.
Yeah, the more I zoom in that middle...
Yeah, the more you zoom in, I haven't physically gone there, I've just looked at the pictures and the amount of pictures that I've looked at of trees the past, since I became Tree Warden, is ginormous, exuberant. But I can get a further, I can look at it further to see if more, if it needs to be more than just limbed, and also...
My suggestion is, we authorize taking it down or limbing it.
Or limbing it.
And that way, we don't have to have another public hearing.
Okay.
We just say, whatever your final decision is, whether you and DPW want to take it down, or just take out the dangerous limbs, I, I think that's the right way to do it.
So, and I'll say, if it is taken down, we, it's like, we've had issues with Unitil, right, stumping? It's kind of like, yeah, so, let's finish. But also, it is the Scenic Road Act to replace the tree.
Yeah.
So, we'd like appropriate...
We can take care of that. We've planted a ton of trees, so we'll, we can take care of that if it needs to be taken out and, and remove the stump.
Yes.
With the new tree contract service, too. Earlier, Commissioner Erickson was talking, I think we're just waiting for someone to finish finalizing and signing the documents to bring them on board. So, I'll get their feedback as well.
Okay.
When we go out there to give them the initial thought of what we were trying to do, and I'll concur and ask them as well, and see what their feedback is, to see if it's something that they would recommend taking out. And if it does get taken out, part of the tree, the wording in the tree contract, when they remove a tree, it would be stomped and grounded out, so we would remove all that.
Okay.
And then, obviously, being on a scenic road, we would replace it with another tree.
I would say, and replace it with something appropriate within the proximate area.
Oh, absolutely.
Not the exact same, but, you know, with, what's appropriate to spacing out.
Absolutely.
With there, so we can continue that it's a scenic road. There. It's aging out.
[laughing]
Here and there. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody, virtual, Paul?
There are.
No ones with their hands raised? They'd like to speak on this matter.
No hand raised.
So, if anybody out, in virtual, we can use the raise your hand function?
Or if you're here in person and want to speak, you're welcome to, too.
Yes.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Motion's been made with a second to close the joint hearing. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. We'll take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. Now for any discussion or vote?
I'll make a motion to, to allow either limbing or cutting in its entirety the tree noted in the exhibits presented, in the area of 230, 239 Mount Elam Road. And I, I don't know if you want to, just for clarity, Paula, if you just want to say, and make every attempt to...
Oh, just replace...
Remove the stump, if, if it's, if the tree's cut, and replace it in, in, in the nearby proximity.
Correct. Second? Let's see. A motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye, and roll call vote. We have, Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye, and?
Me, aye.
Perfect. Awesome.
And that's Tree Warden.
And thank you for being so patient. I do apologize.
No, not your fault. Thank you for stepping up and...
Yes, thank you.
We'll see you more.
Yeah.
We'll see you every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time this evening.
Oh, not a problem at all.
All right.
All right, next on our agenda this evening, we have site plan review. Applewild School proposing to build an athletic and wellness center consisting of just under 50,000 square foot gross floor area. It's located at 120 Prospect Street in the residential RE district. Good evening, how are you?
Thank you. My name is Dan Quayle, Principal with Lincoln Architects. Thank you for having us back. Just to update everybody and...
Can I stop you for one second? Just, just for the record, it should be noted, because we watched these afterwards, that Tracy had recused herself. Thank you.
So, now we have five.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no problem.
We watch these things after the fact, and you don't see someone walking out.
Right.
So, we gotta make note of it.
For the record. Thank you.
Okay. So, after the, the meeting last month, we've made some changes. There's some things that have happened on campus, as well as us making some edits and changes to the building design itself. Couple of things that have happened, there's been some concern about light spill from other projects. The View Street Dormitory, some of the exterior lighting has been changed. There are blinds that have been added to the stairwell that, I believe, some of the light spill is going out on the uphill side of the View Street Dorm. So, that's been addressed, as well as the, there was some, there was a comment about the shrubbery, that said the intersection of View Street and Prospect Street, that has been cut back. The stumps haven't been completely removed yet, but they will be shortly, to try and improve, you know, the sightline and the access from View Street out onto Prospect Road. As far as the, the building design itself, we, we've submitted a few different things for everyone's review, and maybe we can call up, start maybe with the roof plan?
This is what I had on when you were, when you were talking. All right, let me pull it back up.
Okay, so this is, at the bottom of, what you'd see on the page here would be View Street. So, the gymnasium is in the center. On the right hands, originally, the mechanical units were on the left-hand side towards View Street, behind a screen wall. What we've done is we've re-engineered the roof, working with our structural engineer and our mechanical engineer. We've shifted everything to the right-hand side of the gym, which is between the gymnasium and the dining hall, which would, would essentially be at the right side of where this proposed building is. We've actually lowered the roof a little bit in, in that area, and we have a screen wall there. Some of the other things that we've done, I've, I've updated some of the renderings in, in 3D, and we're showing the mechanical, where all the mechanical units are. We've also had our electrical engineer prepare a site photometric plan, and we've submitted all of the exterior light fixtures. So, we can, we can go through that if, if people like. So, starting with this...
Do you want, I, I went down one, do you want me to just down to the first one?
It, it doesn't matter.
I just thought the other one showed better, the view towards the neighbors, that's why.
Yeah, we can, we can jump through all of them, but what you'll see on the roof plan now, on the, the large, the black areas that you see on the roof, that's, that's a proposed PV array that we're working with Boston Solar. So, the main roof, the flat roof of the gymnasium, on either side of the skylight that's over the pool area, and where the mechanic, on the, on the uphill side, you can see a little bit adjacent to the View Street Dormitory. That's where the squash courts are below that, and that's where the mechanical equipment was originally. We've shifted that to the left in this view, adjacent to where the dining hall is. And then if we go to a couple of, you know, obviously, this is an aerial view, this is what you'd see if you're a bird or in a helicopter or something. But the next views, if we go to a couple of next slides, like this one, for example, is, View Street's going up, up to the left there, the mechanical units are highlighted with that little bubble, it's behind a screen wall. We've actually worked with the engineer to reduce from two units down to one, it's one slightly larger unit for the, for the gymnasium itself, and then we've got an acoustical screen wall around that. So, we've made some efforts to try and listen to the neighbors and accommodate some of their needs and concerns. So, you know, again, the, the units are now more towards the campus, if you will, versus some of the abutters, a little farther up on View Street. The next couple of views, it really is just to show, like, this one, you can barely see...
I'm sorry.
Just the way the camera is behind that, that wood screen wall up at the top is, is a green band. That's where the mechanical units are actually behind that, that screen. And then this is, this is a view from View Street, looking towards the existing main loop of the campus, and you can barely see a little clip of it up on the upper side. So, I think, you know, we've, we've moved and re-engineered some of this to, to help both with the aesthetics and potential concerns for, for noise and whatnot. And I think it was, it was a good decision to do that. One, we got rid of one unit completely, and have one larger unit, but it's also screened, and we're farther away from any abutters in terms of view and/or noise. Another concern with site plan here, this is just to show an updated view in color. I think one of the things that was mentioned, and I believe, Paul, you commented on it last week, it's tough to tell exactly how many trees are coming down, because there's a mass between the View Street, the driveway that goes up to the Anson Building. But in general, there's approximately 20-plus trees coming down, not including the, the smaller saplings along that, that road. And we're, we've got over 60 trees going back on the project, so it's almost a three-to-one ratio of, you know, what's coming down and what's being replaced. One of the things I didn't mention, or haven't mentioned yet, is the, some of the work that the school has been doing, they're, they've started to landscape the front slope of the View Street Dorm, which is immediately to the left of where the proposed new building is going. Let's see.
Bear with me for one second. I was gonna bring that up, and I, I think luckily, we ran into...
Ms. Jolly.
Ms. Jolly at the, I met Mike on Friday, Mr. McGolfin on Friday, to go over some neighborhood concerns, and one of the things that was brought up, and you, I haven't been there since then, so, I mean, Mike can probably talk about it when we get to public comment, but I'm gonna pull up the photos that I took. Bear with me for one second. The, the conversation that we had had was that, you know, this, this area, especially this corner, tends to get pretty overgrown and, and unmaintained, and the, you know, Mike was saying that, that it's a, it's an eyesore for the, for the immediate abutters. was saying that, that it's a, it's an eyesore for the, for the immediate abutters. And I had mentioned to Ms. Jolly that it might be, you know, kind of, we're gonna put all the neighbors through construction and this new building, and maybe it's the least they can do to do some sort of, you know, plantings there and make that corner that rounds into your driveway, you know, look a little more presentable.
Yes, totally agreed. And that, that school has made a commitment, at least internally with us and their B&amp;G folks, that they're gonna try and take care of that.
What's the, what's the address of View, what View address?
That's 54.
54.
Okay.
As you know, and I, have you, there's been discussion with DPW, they're gonna do some stormwater and separation work?
Yeah, that, that project has been ongoing, and our consultant made it through his Conservation Committee hearing and decided to come join us. So yes, we've been, our, our engineer, Anthony Cleaves, is from Haleyan Ward, has been working with Public Works Department, and Weston Sampson, who's working for the city, doing the separation of the sanitary and the storms, who are from all the way down View Street. So they, they've been, and Anthony can probably comment on that, but we have been in contact with them and working with them and trying to resolve some of the details and the coordination, so that what the city's going to be doing, what Applewild's gonna, going to be doing as a part of their project, all dovetails together.
Is that, other, on that photograph of the part you had up for 54 View, it's like, all that runoff is just like, made a ditch right in front of-
It has.
The whole aspect, whether or not it, it needs a berm there, and, and or you consider, is, is it helpful to continue your sidewalk up to meet your walkway right there for that building?
Well, the, the students really go from, the handicap accessibility into the dormitory is really from the campus side, the backside. So I'm not sure a sidewalk is needed there, but there will be, from what I understand from the city's program and what they're gonna be doing, there will be new curving put in there. There's an existing sort of, a little bit farther down, there's a stone drainage swale. That will be coming out as part of this. One, you can see in this photo here, on the left-hand side is the driveway that goes up to the Anson Building.
Yep.
There is, maybe back one photo, Paul. That, that manhole, from what I understand, that drainage man, does nothing. It's, it's, it's too high up on the, on the street and is a part of-
That the photo you were looking for?
Yeah, zoom in on the front of 54 there, like to the drive right. There was like, the manhole he's got, like right there at the driveways, right?
Right. The intention is that, that manhole is going to push down to the opposite side of the driveway, so anything that-
You actually see that one in this photo. That's what this is right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you see the stone swale that just goes down. It's all, gone cut up in front of the property.
Right. So that, that is going to be remedied as part of the city's work, but also what Applewild is going to be doing in terms of the curving and the sidewalks from that point down. But there is no, there was no need from the, from the school's perspective to continue the sidewalk up farther, because the students all enter from the campus side, not from the View Street side.
Well, that would be great, what you're doing with the landscaping on that corner. That'll be a real plus.
Just so the board knows, we do have department comments on Applewild.
Are they uploaded?
Yes, they are.
I'll find them.
There's some in the Applewild folder, and there's also one in the hearing folder from the water department.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the other concerns we heard at the last meeting is potential smell of chlorine or anything like that from the pool itself. There's a UV system as a part of the pool equipment, as well as a code compliant mechanical system. And there's, and from the experience from our pool consultant, being an indoor pool, and the fact that the mechanical room is on the far side of where the abutters are, and that there's a UV system, they don't anticipate, nor have they ever had an issue with any of their pool designs in terms of any, you know, smells that might emanate from the building, especially when, you know, the closest to the butter, well, actually it's the View Street Dormitory, but the, the next closest to the butter is approximately 250 feet or, or more from where the mechanical room is.
And, and just on that topic, just because it might come up again too, the city code controls noxious odors as well. So if there are noxious odors, the Board of Health would be required to, to remediate them. They require the applicant to remediate them.
Right. Understood. One of the other items, if you'd like to go through, we can certainly go through. We provided a photometric site plan of the project area, along with all of the exterior fixtures that are proposed, and everything is dark sky compliant. All of the light is directed down. There's little to no spill off the site at all. There's only one area that would point out.
Pull that one up.
Again, if, it's, it's really hard to read.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's not gonna come out good here, but-
No, I, I had to zoom in on my computer.
But that's what it looks like.
They're, they're very light. But along, you know, the, the left-hand side of the project, and I'm gonna go sort of counterclockwise, we've got .1-foot candles, approximately 10 feet from the property line. In front of View Street is actually zero-foot candles from this project. At the end of the driveway coming down from the Anson Building is .1-foot candles. In front of where the, there's the exit that comes out where, kind of about a third or a quarter of the way from the right-hand side, there's an egress door there. The egress lighting, by the way, that only comes on in the event of an emergency. So those aren't on all night, but they're basically a downlight that's required by code over the egress paths to provide the foot candles. So those actually aren't include, we included the product cuts, so everyone can see what it looks like, but they're not actually included in the photometric. That one area at the end of where that sidewalk comes out from the building and meets the sidewalk on View Street has a foot candle total of 2.9. As you keep going down the street towards the dining hall, it ranges from .1-foot candles back down to zero.
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
So, let's, let's make this a little bit easier. Instead of doing the foot candles, because that, that is not an easy concept to understand, give the gist of, does any of this light spill out off the site to a significant degree?
No, does not.
That's, that's, because that's what the abutters obviously want to know, rightfully so. This proves it, but I, you know, a lot of people, I mean, we see a lot of these, but I'm sure a lot of people don't, might not understand the concept, so.
We can see an example, I think you provided an example of what the light fixture would look like on the-
I believe it's, yeah, there's one up here.
In the package.
Yeah, I got it right here.
And the locations where you put their E on the plan, those with the emergency-
Well, there's a few different types. The, the AA fixtures are the first, well, the first one that was there, which is the pole. I included all the photometric data, which is, you have to jump about 10 pages to get to the next part. But it's basically that, that downlight is, is the pole-mounted downlight, and there's probably, there's four of them along the drive. There's a couple between the building. A lot of what we ended up doing between this building and the dining hall, we changed them from the taller pole lights to bollard lights. So it's just throwing enough light onto the pathways. And there's actually four different types of bollards. Same bollard design, but there's different lenses you can put on them, where you want more of a linear throw, or you want a round pool of light. That's why there's four different ones.
Is, is that what those are?
No.
Okay.
That's, it's, it's probably another 10 pages down.
Okay.
I probably didn't need to include all this stuff for you.
It's okay. I'll get there eventually.
All right. So, that, that one, the type BB fixture, again, it's a downlight. There's four of them on the face of the dining hall, not the dining hall, the gymnasium building facing View Street. But again, it's downlight trying to wash a little bit of light on that, that corridor. There are a few recessed downlight LED cans under the horizontal canopies, both at the upper entrance and the lower entrance. And then, the emergency lights, again, it's a code-required light. Any of the exits, like for example, there's one coming off the left side of the gym up to sort of where the, towards the Anson Building. That E-type fixture only goes off in an emergency. That's not on all night.
Okay.
Here's, here's the bollards I found.
Yeah, that's the corresponding one for the MK, but there's, there's a slightly different one that matches the downlight.
Okay.
Fixure, that one there.
This one, okay.
Yeah, it's in the same family as the, the pole-mounted lights.
Okay.
And everything is, you know, there's different color temperatures you can do on the lamps. We've got everything in the warm, more yellow tone, the lower, the lower the number, the more natural light it looks like, versus some of the original LEDs, you probably all know, were very blue and cold-looking. This is a warmer light.
Thank you.
Okay.
Paul will find those DPW comments.
Yeah, I already did. They're, they're, I'm sure Anthony can summarize them, but they're too technical, I think, to particularly matter to our proceedings, but I can read them if you want. Hold on one second. So Whitman and, excuse me, Weston Sampson had asked some questions, and, yeah, do you wanna tackle kind of the gist in it?
Do you have, is it an email that you have in front of you?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull, I'm gonna pull it up on the screen. One second.
So, it's been, it's been great. We've kind of had an open line of communication between ourselves, Commissioner Erickson and his Weston and Sampson team, which has been great. I would send them some plans, they would send me some of their plans, we're going back and forth. And so this is, this email is basically a chain of all of that. And my last email to them was kind of updating them on the updates that we made to better coordinate with their progress set of designs for View Street. And then so, the Weston and Sampson team, Chris Mack, and then in red, kind of responded to some of my updates. But in, in some of the black part, one of the comments he had was just to, you know, just to confirm that there were no increases in the stormwater runoff as part of the Applewild project. And there aren't, we submitted a stormwater report for that. Two things we did there, we tried to minimize the increase in impervious surface as part of the project. So, we have about 19,000 square feet of added impervious, which is, which is not that much compared to the size of the project. And then what we also did is we added a stormwater basin, rain garden, as part of the, the project to offset the increase in the rates of runoff, but also to coordinate with the Pittsburgh stormwater regulations, where you're required to treat one inch of runoff of that impervious surface. So, we've, we've provided that. So we reduced the rates of runoff, as well as we provide added treatment. We're actually getting some of the existing impervious surface to that area as well. And it's gonna help treat some of the existing pavement. So we've, we've satisfied that. And then, a lot of the other comments, I guess that to summarize, we're gonna continue to coordinate our, our plans with the cities as we continue to on-go, and also into construction. I think there's gonna need to be a continued, you know, collaboration and cooperation, depending upon the timing of the city's work and Applewild's work. So I think it's, we have a great line of communication now. I expect that to, to continue throughout the process.
Glad to hear it. That's the way things should work.
Yeah. It's, it's, again, it's, DPW is a great team, so it's, it should work out very well.
All right. That being said, there, any other department comments beside DPW?
I think Ryan also submitted some comments.
Let me go into the other. That's the only thing in that folder. Let me go into the main.
Okay.
That's in the Applewild folder.
That was the only one in the Applewild folder.
Oh, really?
Yeah, DPW comment.
Is it above it?
Unless it's under previous materi, is it under previous materials? So that's DPW review per Weston Sampson. And I have, yeah, all the other stuff is all their stuff. AAWC. Maybe it's under previous materials. Nope. Look into hearings. So I got, yeah, I got the city department comment sheet. Is that the one, Chantel?
Well, that's one of them, yeah. Ryan also did a-
I don't have Ryan's in there.
I must have missed it.
Okay. If you have it, you can read it. Do you have it?
I can get into my email. Let me, let me do that.
Okay.
It's up to you, yeah.
Let you do that, and then we'll take some public comment.
Okay.
Just so you, I'll just read the comment here. This is the department review comment. It says, "I don't see any issues from the city side." I don't know who wrote this, it doesn't say. "I don't see any issue from the city side. In the future, the city will be installing new drains on View and Prospect. The city's consultant, Weston Sampson, is working with 120 prospect engineers to resolve any conflicts." So that's DPW, I assume.
Yeah, that was from, I think, Ken, what is his last name?
Ken Dupont?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. Okay.
All right. We are, we're up to hearing for public comment, so anybody who would wish to come, please, please raise your hand. Come up to the podium if you'd like to ask any questions. Mr. McGolfin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. Appreciate the, the opportunity and appreciate the willingness to arm the work, you know, with the neighbors. I just wanna kind of recap some of the concerns that the, we as director abutters, for the record, I live at 80 Bond Street, which is the corner of Bond and View directly across from the project. You know, this is upwards of a 50,000 square foot building, right? So kind of somewhere in the neighborhood of a, of a grocery store being built in a, in a kind of a historic neighborhood. And we're all certainly in favor of the project. We want to see the school flourish and grow, but we had some issues with the previous project not going before site plan review. And, you know, we've had issues with, with traffic and lighting, extreme lighting from, emulating from the building. So we just wanted to kind of recap the corner, the, the southwest corner entrance of the building. I had brought up, is there any thing that can be done architecturally to improve the look of that? Because that entrance more or less looks like, you know, a commercial building side door, you know? Another question I had is, what caliber trees will be going in that, that area? It shows, you know, three or four trees. It'd be nice to see that. A little heavily landscaped to try to improve the aesthetics. Appreciate the, you know, the willingness to try to relocate some of the mechanicals. I guess, I have a question now with the, with the advent of the solar, is the solar gonna all be visible to the abutters as well? So I guess through you, Madam Chair, if we could ask those questions, because we're just a little concerned that we're looking at a, a building that's, you know, upwards of 30 feet tall, and, you know, what height and visibility of the solar, is the solar array gonna, you know, do for the, you know, for the neighborhood? We, we would hope and anticipate, you know, through site plan as it's a requirement, the boarding house that is there now, that did not go through site plan, there's a lot of traffic that comes and goes. And we're a little concerned that there is very little to no off-street parking for that particular building itself, which the school has been great about addressing the problems. Amy Jolly has been wonderful with it, but, you know, there's gonna be, we know that there's yearly events and the neighborhood doesn't have a problem with, you know, concentrated parking during those, those few yearly events. But this building is gonna bring service vehicles, it's gonna bring cleaning crews, drop-offs. Our question is, where is all this gonna occur? Because it, it doesn't really show anywhere in the plan. And, you know, there, there are already concerns about the traffic issues in the neighborhood, from the school especially. The other thing is, the beauty shots don't show mechanics on the side of the building. So if a solar array is going in, are there gonna be new telephone poles with big transformers? Is there gonna be side-mounted electrical mechanics? Whenever I've seen solar arrays that are small, there's all this electrical equipment that goes with it. Is that all gonna be visible on the View Street side? Is that gonna be pushed inward toward the building? Again, folks, just trying to, this is gonna be a massive building. Something that is not allowed in this district other than it's a school and it's exempt, you know? So those, those are some of the things. The other thing is, you know, this is a pretty well-funded project from what I hear, and, you know, we all want to see it be successful. I had sent some pictures to Mr. Fontaine that shows the condition of the chain-link fence on the Bond Street and on the View Street side. And we would, you know, the neighborhood would wholeheartedly like the board and the applicant-
Just, just speak for yourself.
Okay.
You haven't signed on to anyone else, so just speak for yourself.
No problem. We would like, I, my wife, would, would like the, everyone to consider that with, with the overall impact of this project and the scope and the cost of the project, that, you know, it's not out of the purview of the site plan review to, to look at maybe the possibility of replacing this, this fence as part of the project, you know, with a four-foot black chain-link fence or something similar. It's gonna be a magnificent project. It's gonna look great. But I think, you know, from the school's standpoint, they're gonna have this gorgeous new campus, and we've got this incitely fence on, you know, that's probably over 40 years old and seen its, you know, its lifespan. So I think that's probably some of, you know, what I'd like to speak to. Another hope was maybe that that, the granite wall that is facing, I don't know if you can pull that up?
The, oh, that, sorry, this one?
Yeah. You know, that's a pretty cool, original, historic wall. As some of the other abutters mentioned at the last meeting, so I can speak to them. You know, is there any way in the scope of the project, that I know the grade is coming down, that maybe that wall could be retained and everything behind it, kind of the grade come down? Just some thoughts. Again, we're looking at long-term, you know, view of View Street. So, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
So to Mike's point, the, these are pictures, I, these are the pictures I took first on Friday. The fence doesn't look all that old, but there are sections that are a little dilapidated, and it doesn't have a, you know, finished, kind of a finished look to the top of the fence for whatever weird reason. It's kind of like, it got halfway done and never finished. I don't know why. The photos that, if you bear with me for one second, because I gotta go back, the photos that Mike had sent, kind of show the, the, you know, the, the damage on some of the sections of fence from probably just trees falling and everything else, the corner, you know. I, I think, I think certainly, you know, the board, I guess, can kind of talk about how they feel about it. I didn't, I didn't think the fence as a whole was in bad condition. I think it could definitely use, A, at a minimum, to be finished, to be cleaned up, and to be repaired. You know, I, I think that it would be great if you wanted to do a new, you know, like decorative fence there. I, I think, I had asked Mike, my initial thought was, well, why do we even need a fence there? But I guess it's very heavily wooded. You just, my- But I guess it's very heavily wooded. You just, my assumption is you just don't want people in there.
There's a playground there on the other side.
Right. Well, the conversation I had had, well, why don't you just run it down the backside of the playground on the preschool side? Instead of going all, I mean, it runs up, it runs up Bond Street another two or 300 feet. Um, and, and, and I think that, you know, at least, I, I think, you know, Mike's thought was that, um, you know, you don't want to encourage people to go in there and, you know, that you have some, um, potentially, uh, places where people can hide at night and might be, you know, problematic. Um, so, I mean, you know, again, it's the type of thing where, you know, there's, there's a lot of money being spent in this corner. And there are some, um, you know, um, some things you're putting some of the neighbors through as far as, you know, months of construction, everything else. Um, there's a lot that probably could be done just to be a good neighbor, and that might be one of them. And, and again, I think at a minimum, it's not a lot to finish the fence, make it look nice, make it look as presentable as possible. I think, uh, the alternative is replace it, so. Um, I don't know if you want to, uh, take a stab at, um, the, the questions that were asked. Some were easy. How, what are the, the caliber of trees? What, what size trees are being installed? Cause it should be, my, I, I told Mike, my assumption is it's usually on a landscaping plan, what they're planting as far as size of tree.
It, it is. Unfortunately, I have them here. They're in my car.
Well, I, I can, I can pull up the landscaping plan from last month, so you can talk about the other things, and I can see if I can find that. Oops. Hold on, I gotta stop the share for a second.
Uh, a couple, the, the lighting, um, again, we kind of went over a little bit, and I'm happy to walk through the photo metrics. But, you know, the, the proposed new lighting is, it's all dark skies. There's no, you know, visible light source. And there's, other than that one fixture that's out by the egress coming out of where the squash courts and the end of the gym are, everything is basically zero foot candles at the edge of, at the property line. It, we hit 2.6 foot candles in that one spot. So I think, you know, we've, we've tried to address that, um, you know, from an engineering point and a design point of view, that it, that it works well. As far as, you know, the drop-off, the intent, if, if everyone remembers it in an early version of this, when we went to the Economic Development Task Force meeting, we had some visitor parking and drop-off on View Street. We eliminated that. The, the, all of the, the drop-off is intended to be off the, uh, existing loop that's in front of the Crocker Building and kind of the front of the dining hall building. So nothing, there, there won't be a, a drop-off and pickup on, on View Street.
What about commercial, like mentioned about maintenance and commercial vehicles like that for the buildings?
There's, because there's no parking and there's no, there's no place on View Street for them to do that. I think, again, I think just like, you know, the way the UPS and, and everything else and foods, everything comes in through that front, front drive. There is an area off of that front loop in front of the dining hall, kind of parallel with, with Prospect Street. There is an area that I suppose somebody could pull off in that existing dining hall. But right now, for example, when UPS and Amazon and everybody else delivers to the school, they come up the main drive and everything's dropped off at, like student mail and other things is dropped off at the main, um, academic building. It, it's not intended to go here.
One of the things that I had mentioned, I, I think I mentioned it, maybe I just wrote it and didn't say it, but I think I did, um, at the first meeting, was that one of the permanent conditions would be that no construction vehicles are allowed to park on Bond or View.
Yes. Yeah.
And, and obviously Prospect, cause Prospect might even be worse, but, yeah.
Right. We, we've been working with, with the general contractor on how they might stage this. And, you know, we have a logistics plan. We've kind of worked out with them. And the intention, like, for example, during construction, the, right now, that loop is a one-way loop through the main campus. Well, that'll probably be, we're going to have to fence off around the construction zone for the safety of the staff and, and everyone, and the kids. That, that one-way loop, there'll be a turn, essentially a turnaround up where they used to keep the dumpsters at the end of the Crocker Building. So the traffic will have to come in and out through that existing entrance during construction. And then where it's fenced off on the portions of the loop that won't be used, the contractor will have some limited parking there, but the rest is gonna have to be remote farther up the hill for their vehicles, if whatever can't fit within the construct, limits of the construction fencing. And, and, you know, the school's fully aware that they're not gonna be able to have, and the contractor is, they're not gonna be able to have subcontractor parking or anything like that on View Street.
You had mentioned that the, the anticipated, at least the overflow parking will be across the street off of, on the other side of Prospect.
Right. And the school eventually will be looking at potentially doing a permanent parking area over there. Um, not sure how many spaces, but that, that was their goal. Cause eventually they want to potentially put tennis courts over there as well. That field is somewhat underutilized. As far as the, the, uh, solar array on the roof--
You want to pull up the site plan of the solar?
For the, for the majority?
Yes.
Uh, there's a few, there's a few views, you know, obviously from an aerial view, you're going to see it. If we go maybe one or two past this.
Oh, there's no more after that, so.
All right. So from, I think it should be the third view.
The, the third view, this is the next page, and then this one, that's--
Right. So that, that one, obviously coming up View Street, you're not going to see it. Now, obviously the neighbors farther up the street, especially if you're on the second or third floor, no matter what we do, you're going to be looking down on, on this building to some degree. I do have a couple of additional photos that are in a separate file. It's called View Street Photos.
Hold on a second. Let me, uh, see what-- Yes. And I see here that, that some of the, some of the clearing, um, of vegetation that was done.
Right. So if we go, the, the last, there's a couple of perspectives, and this was just uploaded this morning, so everyone may not have had a chance to see that yet. Uh, the, the view on the top there is essentially from Mr. McLaughlin's front porch area. So his, from second floor, chances are he probably is going to see the, the PV array. And if the PV array wasn't there, he'd be seeing a roof membrane. But from, from eye level and street level, you won't see it. And then if you go a little farther up to the next one, this is, this shot is from 64 View Street, essentially at their second floor level, looking down. So what you're seeing in this photo on the right-hand side is the edge, the end of the 54 View Street dormitory. And then the new entrance, uh, that's, that's coming off the existing driveway that heads up to the Anson Building. So you're seeing a little bit of the skylight.
I'm gonna try and zoom, zoom in a little bit, so, you know, Mike's trying to--
So that, that ridge skylight is, is directly above the pool area. And on either side of that ridge skylight, the solar folks are proposing--
Okay.
A, a set of panels on the left and the right. And it also shows up in the roof plan, if that's easier to sort of see what areas they're proposing.
Okay.
All right. What else was there? Um, any, uh, location of any solar accessories? So from the solar, would it be, would it be on this, this side of the building?
If, it's basically up the, if, maybe go back to the roof plan, that may be the best pla, or the, even the site plan.
Do you want this one, or do you want the site plan?
Um--
Let me see. Hold on. I got about a million windows open right now, so bear with me for one second. All right. Let me get the site plan up. There it is.
All right. So the white area you see in the center is, is where the new building is going. And they've used a Google Earth image for the background, and then they've superimposed over the, the site improvements in the darker green colors. But off, sort of the middle, the left middle of that wall that runs up and down, kind of right below your cursor, is where, is where the main electric room is for the building. So if, if anything had to be on the exterior, it would have been there on that side, so it's not facing the public way. But one of the things that's required in the building code is, e- even if the client did not elect to put in the solar array, we have to make the building solar-ready. And a part of that is the mechanical and electric room have to be big enough to handle the size of the inverters. So the electric room is basically one level below that indoors. All of the inverters and things are inside the building. So they really don't anticipate anything being on the exterior of the building as it relates to solar, other than the, you know, the panels on the flat roofs.
Would they be screened at all? They'd just be attached to the building or on the side of the?
For the panels?
They're inside.
The, the, the inverters and everything are in, inside in the mechanical room.
Sorry.
Um, are there any, and I know sometimes this is a very difficult question to answer. You might not know. But are there any known situations where you would need a new utility pole?
Not, not as a part of this right now. I mean, one of the things that, which is turning out to be a little bit problematic, is there was a request early on to relocate the transformer away from View Street. Now, the existing transformer for that building, which actually serves a couple of buildings, is right off of View Street. Um, we were asked to move it up the hill, kind of where, again, the middle point, where we were just pointing out, the transformer's proposed to be up there. That might prove to be a little bit difficult. We've left it that way for now, because there's a lot of utilities, that Anthony tells me, are below the existing roadway, uh, the driveway that goes up to the Anson Building. So fitting in the new conduit for the transformer is going to be difficult. We're going to try and leave it there for now, but we may have to come back to this board at some point. Once, once the buildings are demolished and they start doing the excavation, we can really see what's there. Um, we may have to revisit that. The intent is to try and get, keep it off the street where we're currently showing it on the submittal.
Okay.
On the parking, do you have, um, any net gain on the parking?
Yes, there is. There's 11 spaces. It, it's a little bit off this, this site plan. I don't know if, I guess they kind of cropped it. Again--
Are you talking about these ones up here?
Well, there's some--
Oh, 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 right here.
Yeah.
This, we're just wondering if that, um, triggers any EV readiness requirement with that, because of the--
We had that in the plan early, and I, to be honest with you, I don't remember where we left that.
Okay.
Um, but we have 11 new spaces proposed at the, kind of the, originally, again, if everyone remembers or might remember, we had a new parking lot proposed, kind of where that sandy area is on the lower right. That's the children's playground. It wasn't gonna work from an engineering point of view for the drainage structures, the water table, and how low it is. So that, that's, we got rid of the parking lot, so we didn't lose those four, three or four spaces to get into our new parking lot. So those went back into the project. And then we've added 11 up top on the upper part of the entry drive, as well as directly across from the main entrance on the main level, there's a handicap parking and drop-off area. So there's essentially a net 12.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring the, just mention that fact about the, the UV in the building code trigger. UV, I'm sorry, EV.
EV, yeah.
Uh, and I did find the, the landscaping plan with all the caliber sizes. It's too small to read, Mike, but if you want, I, we can get it for you. It's, it's in our drop boxes. So I'll read you the first few. I don't know what order these are in, but they're tree, it says trees, deciduous, evergreen, ornamental. So the trees, the first one is 10 to 12 foot, the second one's three-inch caliber, three-inch caliber, six to seven foot, three-inch caliber, three-inch caliber, three-inch caliber, two and a half, 10-gallon evergreen. So, kind of gives you an idea. They're all over the place, but, um, the, all the planting sizes are all on there.
And there was a mention about a stone wall at the prior meeting?
Yes.
And that reuse of certain components of that and, and that--
Well, the, yeah, the, the school's intention was to reuse, when, when we went to Historics a couple of months back, at least what everyone thought at the time was that stone wall was probably built in the 1950s or so. So it wasn't, you know, from the 1800s or something. But what we were trying to do is repurpose all the capstone pieces, the larger linear blocks, as a part of kind of an outdoor classroom area that was, um, in front of the Anson Building and kind of connects to the back of Crocker and the corner of our, our new building here. So the idea was to try and reuse those stones. Um, and I believe where the, the school would rather not replace that stone wall farther up the street, what we're trying to do, as much as we can, is eliminate retaining walls on campus. There are several, and right now, as in the existing conditions, particularly that one at the edge of the existing gymnasium, that's gotta be 10, 12 feet tall. And there's no fence on the top of it. There really should be a guardrail of some kind on that. So we've tried to design that, as many of those out and use, you know, slopes and landscape planting and things like that to avoid, um, areas where kids might want to jump off and hurt themselves.
But to answer the, answer the question specifically that Mike had asked was, um, and I'm trying to get back to the picture now. Hold on one second. I gotta share the screen again. The question was, can it just remain? Is, is it, because it looks like the building's set back quite a ways from there.
It is, but, but our grade is, the existing gymnasium floor that's there now is quite a bit higher than what our new squash court elevation is. So our squash court elevation is much closer to where the street level is. And the way that stone wall, it's built as a retaining wall, not a freestanding wall. So if we were to remove the soil on the backside, we'd have to rebuild it anyway.
So it's gonna be a gradual grade when it's done versus that step up?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Because we have, in, in parts of the site, we have upwards of a 22-foot cut into the hillside to push this building as deep down as we could. And that happens to be one of the areas where we're, where the, that our main floor level is actually probably five to six feet lower. It's maybe a foot above, um, where that retaining wall starts is sort of our finished floor. There's a very gentle, you know, it had to be handicapped accessible to get us out to the main, the main sidewalk. So.
Thank you.
Do you want to bring up the site plan of just what the view of the building's gonna look from View Street?
Hold on. I gotta find the right one. Is this what you want?
Uh, I guess so that, that's what we have.
There's a lot of documents. You're gonna be specific.
I know, I know. Well, yeah, just what the bill, cause, well, just what Mike mentioned about what the view looks like of the, of that side from View Street.
All right. Let me see--
Architecturally.
The new pic, so this is probably the best--
It might be in the last packet, actually.
Well, so, so there's no, there's, yeah, there's no picture. This is the best you get from View Street, the one that I had up, cause this is, this is the View Street angle there. Oh, right here? This one?
Yeah, if you, yeah, that--
There we go.
That one there is, is essentially right across the street where the Marshall Building is. You know, we don't have, I don't have the driveway coming out from the Marshall Building there, but that's View Street going up. So you're seeing on the right-hand side a little bit of the corner of the existing dining hall, and then obviously the new building. And then the white building to the left is the exist, is 54 View Street, the dormitory, the existing dormitory.
There's different materials, and you've got the evergreens also, not evergreens, but the trees in the front to soften it.
Right. Yeah, I think, you know, all in all, there's, there's an awful lot of landscaping that's gone into this to try and, um, keep it pleasant and, you know, keep the scale in check.
You, you had mentioned something in passing about the roof, um, the roof line changed. The, the total height of the building went down?
No, the, the, the roof line over where the mechanical units, we dropped that down about three feet.
Okay.
Because we didn't want the mechanical units to be above the, the gymnasium roof. So we've dropped that down. Where the top of that sort of white wall is there,
Yes, so the behind--
the roof is actually about three feet or two feet lower than that. And then the screen wall goes up to completely block any sort of view you'd have from street level or pedestrian level.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we did have, we did have a hand raised in the audience.
We'll take some, I'm gonna say, we'll take some additional--
Perfect.
Public comment, cause I'm sure there's maybe other, other people here in attendance as well.
We have, uh--
Take a virtual?
Yep. Judge Hellman has his hand raised. You're all set when you just press, there you go.
Can you hear me?
We can.
We can.
Great. Thank you so much for, uh, setting up this virtual hearing. So I'll, I'll be brief. Two things. Uh, number one, thank you very much to, uh, Amy Jolly for, uh, removing those evergreens on the corner of View and Prospect. It has really, really opened up that intersection, and thank you very much. Uh, my second comment is, I do have a, a, a level of frustration that we are only recently learning about these solar panels. Um, and I'm wondering why it wasn't, they weren't in the original plans so that we could have, uh, done our homework. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll make, mention about solar panels, as most of the roofs need to be solar-ready. Even if there was no solar planned now, solar could be, also be done in the future. And it pretty, it's by right to be able to put solar on rooftops, so. It's just, at least we know about it at this stage and what it looks like. And it's, it's good, oh, good business for trying to promote solar, at least on the rooftops. More use of solar. We do like to see that, um, in a lot of commercial projects, big, big projects, too. And we have another, any other comment this evening? Is the plan?
And I do have your pictures if you want them up.
Yeah, sure. I have, um, I have one other I would like to add. So I want to echo the comments about being relatively surprised, very surprised, by the solar array. I think Michael didn't bring up, I'll bring it up, the illustrations that I've seen, I didn't have a lot of time to review them, um, show the array as if the panels were flat. I think they're look like, I tried to count it small, maybe 400 panels. I think they're look like, I tried to count, it's small, maybe 400 panels. But they can't be flat, right? They have to be angled like 10 to 40 degrees.
Like, just, just so we can kind of move along, solar panels is by right. There, there's not, there's no control over the solar panels, meaning they don't even have to have them on the site plan. They put them on there, I think, so that they didn't surprise you, but they, we could have approved the site plan without them, and they still could have installed them.
It will be great if, doing it by right, they take into consideration the significant glare that will be directed from those. I appreciate that the inverters will be inside the building because they produce noise.
From the pictures they showed, it looks like they're all angled in, towards Prospect Street, not towards up the hill.
Couldn't tell.
So, we can bring that, we can bring that photo back up again.
Yeah, hold on one second. I'm trying to get a lot of stuff up here.
Just taking note of that.
I, I also was concerned if there would be a new telephone pole. It sounds like there won't be, so that's great. I emailed you a photo of the new pole that was put in for the dorm when there hadn't been a site review. It, like, we used to have...
Is that the one you want, or the other one?
Oh, that's the light. So we heard tonight that the lights have been improved, but that's a picture from three days ago. So that's the light on the side of the Anson Building that I've asked, you know, I don't know, 10 times over the last three years, could we please do something about it? This is, yeah, same, a couple nights ago. So I did notice the shades had been put. The bottom is where the shade's open, like, not the very bottom, the, the lower arrow, and the upper arrow is where the, where the shade is drawn closed. And the bottom is, it's open a little, basically it's the same, right? There's a shade, but it doesn't change the lighting. I'm not actually asking for them to do, to change a shade. I'm pointing out that despite many polite mentions of the impact of this on my home and how simple it would be to improve it, nothing happens. That light behind the, like, behind my building, the one on the side of the Anson?
You're with me one second.
Yeah. Right, so my fear with the gym is that my whole house will be surrounded by this. It's so bright. That's my first floor, and it just shines directly into the kids' bedrooms on the second floor. I have no idea why it needs to be on all night long.
I guess we can, we can certainly request that be looked at. Again, they've been pretty accommodating, but that, if the, any direct downward lighting or similar lighting that's going on the gym, or a cap on it, or whether it's necessary, you know, if it's just lower security lighting, does the upper lighting have to be on? Maybe just lower in the first story versus it's so high up in the building. It lets, you're right, it goes over the fence line. There's a fairly tall fence there.
Yeah.
And it's above the fence line.
Yeah. And it doesn't have a cover or anything, so it just shines right up into the house.
It looks like the blinds are appreciated, but they, can you put darker blinds, like light-blocking blinds, right? Would that be more of the...
I think it's more just, I'm really hoping the gym, the gym is going to be, I mean, how big is the...
Or can it be on a timer?
The dorm must be 4,000 square feet tops. Gym's going to be 13 times bigger, and I just, I don't want it to be 13 times more intrusive, right? The AC units on the side of that house are, I think they're, they're like quiet industrial units, but having them all there 20 feet from my porch in a residential setting, actually, they make lots of noise, you know? The, the lights are not an unreasonable amount of lights in the house, but they're always on, they never turn off. And that's just my fear with the gym, too, that it will just, it'll just make it not enjoyable.
I don't know if you saw this, and I only ask because we just saw it tonight, but this is from your view from your front porch to the, to the new building.
No.
Second floor?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dispute the second floor point. No offense. The first floor of our house on that side is about 12 feet up, so we can call it the second floor. But that's, if, if we're looking at the corner of the dorm, that's, that's how we see it from our first floor. And the house is three floors, it's not an attic on the third floor, it's three finished floors. So, yeah, we're gonna see it. I don't know what the aqua-colored box is.
That's the Transformer, correct? Yeah.
Is it noisy?
I don't know. Do you know the sound generation of the Transformer?
That'd be a question about sound, any sound screening for the Transformer?
Could it, could it not be a little farther to the right so that it would be behind the dorm?
So I think they wanted it closer to the street, and you pushed it back there, correct? That was the conversation we had had?
Originally, no. Originally, it was down in the green space in front of the, the wall where the squash courts are. Up, it would have been up the hill a little bit from where the existing one currently exists, but it was still accessed off of View Street for unitil. We were, it was suggested that we look at trying to push it farther away from the street. Perhaps we helped one neighbor and we, we heard another one. Maybe there's middle ground, but that, the roadway kind of gets closer to the corner of, of the new build, or not the roadway, the driveway gets a little corner to the closer of the building. We have to be a minimum of five feet off the edge of the building for the Transformer, and it's approximately an eight-foot by eight-foot concrete pad that it sits on. We can, you know, we can screen it, you know, we were showing shrub over there, but it can be, we can screen it with a fence and/or try and push it a little bit closer to the street. But as Mr. Cleaves has mentioned, it would, it really would be better if it could have stayed where we originally had it, because it, we had more green space in which to screen it with a fence and landscaping, and it will avoid having to relocate a significant amount of utilities that run under the existing driveway that goes up to the Anson Building. So we've been trying to cooperate and, and help everybody, but, you know, we solved one problem, then we, we've created another one.
Sure, sure. All right, well, we can look, we can look at, at how that, you know, best, how that best is solved.
I appreciate the comment about, you know, like, solving one causing another in Michael's property and our property. I think this is just, this is what happens when you're trying to put something of this size and scope in a small residential spot. It's a lot, trying to jam a lot of stuff in there. I, I have a question about the construction. I think the, the Happy Path estimate is like 18 to 24 months for construction, right? So that's like barring any kind of delays or anything like that.
Can I just clarify? What, what was the timeframe you gave?
That's about, that's about right.
Okay.
Now, the one good thing I can report, well, the test pits and borings that were done, we didn't hit any ledge. We were expecting to hit a bunch of ledge based on some of the outcroppings. They hit a couple of boulders, but they got pretty much down to 22, 24 feet with just glacial till, which I think is going to be a little easier on the neighbors. It's going to be difficult for the next year and a half, two years, but hopefully we won't hit ledge, so at least that part may, may go away.
To the point of some of the landscaping on, is it 52 View Street? On the side of, is it 54 View Street? Where the AC heating units are, the condensers, and then if you have the basement lighting, could you put some shrubs or something there? Or even just like, you know, a panel of vinyl fence and then put some shrubs in front of it, just as something to kind of make it look a little less industrial? Also, this base, you know, the issue with the basement lighting, but if it's on, you actually have some small low-lying shrubs or something around that area so that it kind of can block...
I would be happy to explore that. I thought the school...
Those are low things.
Right. I mean, if, I'm sure the school would be willing, and I think, believe they've tried to offer suggestions like that, either fencing around the units or planting around the units. I think either one would probably be acceptable with the school. I mean, I can't really, I'm not a member of the board, so I can't really direct that. I can pass the information along.
Bring that back, that along, so that we could...
Certainly.
Let some...
Plants were proposed to us, and we said, great. But it's not up to us to plant them, it's not our property. When the dorm was renovated, and it was a, you know, smaller project, but 50 feet closer, it was very loud for, for a while, right? There, during the construction period, there was, for, you know, like unavoidable reasons, a portageon. And it was what it was, but the truck comes to clean it out every, whatever. That was a relatively, like, smaller project, maybe six or 10 guys at a time. For the two years, or maybe longer, of this one, I would really like the portages not, not to be like facing me and upwind. No, but really, I mean, it's just, yeah. Can they, can they be, please, be put somewhere else?
I'll make a note of that. And, and it should be noted that it was brought to my attention that, and it was no fault of Applewild, but that, that the conversion of the View Street property was supposed to have a site plan review, and it got, it got lost, I think, from what I hear because of someone in the city, which is fine. But at the same time, these things would have came up if we did site plan review for that. So, and again, it's no fault of Applewild, but we would have mitigated the issues with, particularly with the condenser unit screening and landscaping on the front of View Street. So I think those requests are well in line with this site plan review, given that there was never a chance to do a site plan review for the boarding house, and there should have been. And again, Applewild didn't make a mistake. I don't know if a mistake was made or if it was just overlooked or whatever, but, you know, it's, it's, I, I think, again, it's, a lot of this is just being a good neighbor. I mean, we're spending how many millions upon millions of dollars, and we're talking about, you know, adding some decorative, you know, trees and some landscaping, which is going to end up beautifying Applewild anyway. So I think that would, I think that would go a long way.
I, I'm not sure who to, one last comment, who to address it to, but...
Just always to the board.
Yeah, okay. In terms of the, I hesitate whether to bother bringing it up because I think it's so far down the road, but on the, on the drawing, there, one of the drawings shows some trees placed between 54 and 60 View Street towards the back. And I don't know how literal that's supposed to be, or, you know, I would be happy and prefer, like, when it's time for those trees to actually go in, if the, you know, the two property owners, us and the school, could just coordinate, like, what's really going to go exactly there, what makes sense to make it nice. We will have by that time finished some extensive landscaping in, in our, designed to make really a very nice yard.
Are you talking about that line on the left-hand side of the screen?
Yeah, that line, yeah.
If you, if I can. If you go to the rendered site plan, and I think certainly we'd be happy to, and maybe we have our landscape architect when it gets to that point.
You're talking about this site plan?
Yeah. What he ended up doing, it's an evergreen, a row of evergreens. I think the first version was my take and what he was trying to do. He's got these in a little bit more random, instead of just a straight row of soldier trees running, running down that. But we can certainly work, work with the neighbors to place them where it makes the most sense and, and coordinate the species.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Coordinate trees, species, on property line.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, only I had sent you one other photo, which was of the room.
I only, I got two photos.
Can you check one? Can you check again? Maybe it didn't go...
Was the front porch...
Let me check one more time, hold on.
Front porch light changed.
Oh, hold on.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Right, there's so much general light that if, if they say it was changed, I believe it was changed.
I was up there last night, so I saw that there looked like the, of the front porch, there was a front porch light, but it was like pretty much shaded like downwards, so I'm not sure what it looked like previously, whether or not that was made.
Yeah. Like I said, it's like I'm really more concerned just about the trend of like more and more lights and that being very hard to make headway with a small neighborly change, like, hey, guys, this shines right in my kid's bedroom, like, you know, could it be adjusted? It's just like, no.
Found it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. See, this really, this is the, it's View Street. That is the view from my room. And the old pole was like, you know, is in line with the, you know, it was below the roof line of Michael's house. And, yeah, the new pole is like, it's an eyesore. It would be great if there's not another one. I didn't know that was going to go up.
I can tell you from experience, that's a unitil call. That's not a property owner call. Unitil determines where poles go. And quite honestly, it's, it's a nightmare to, to move them, or, I, I'm, I'm not saying they can't, I'm just saying, I know historically it's a monumental task to get poles changed, but, and Anthony, I think you probably deal with this more often than not, so you might be able to...
Yeah, it's, it's basically, unitil tells you what to do.
So maybe a letter to them, to ask them, why is that pole 10, 20 feet taller than the other pole? I don't, I don't disagree with you.
I have no hope that that pole's going to change, but if another one doesn't happen next to it, it would be lovely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably because the elevation changed, because, I mean, there's, there's a wire all the way above the top of that pole, which is crazy. So, but, interesting to say the least.
Thank you for the phone call. Thank you for your testimony.
I have no more virtual hands raised.
So you're going to look into the sound of the Transformer and see if they need any buffering, for additional buffering and/or location?
Oh, I did, Chantel just sent along the email from Ryan. So this is the Assistant City Engineer. He said, "DPW Engineering requires the proposed new concrete sidewalk improvements to meet city specs. Engineering respectfully requests Applewild School to extend new concrete sidewalks to Prospect Street with ADA-compliant pedestrian curb ramps at existing crosswalk, as well as a new ADA-compliant pedestrian curb ramp at the corner of View and Prospect, which would serve to provide a crosswalk across Prospect Street to the existing sidewalk. A wastewater connection permit and associated connection fees will be applied for alongside the required building permits. Project must re-adhere to the stonewater rules and regs. All work within the right of way, including sidewalks, et cetera, shall be performed by a contractor who is bonded with the city of Fitchburn, who is in good standing. Contact DPW Engineering for an updated list of bonded contractors. Water service installations must be inspected by Water Division. Sewer and drainage installations must be inspected by DPW Engineering. Sewer and drain covers must be match city standard. DPW, contact DPW Engineering for specs. Please see additional comments provided by Weston Sampson with regard to the sewer separation. Coordinate construction timelines with Weston Sampson," which you guys knew the latter too. Was any of that a surprise to you, Anthony, or...
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk, yeah.
The first I heard about it, so I, I, I don't know. But I was told you guys did a site walk with Nick, or maybe that was just the Weston Sampson crew last week.
Yeah, I was there.
Okay. I know they had, they had met at some point recently about...
Can you bring up the site plan and reread what he said about the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we can understand.
All right, let me get a site plan first. So the site plan, let me pull up the actual site plan, because, get it eventually. Let's see. No, I want the real site plan. Let's see.
Well, you could see it on the rendering anyway where the sidewalk is.
Can you see it on the rendering? Because you can't see it on the site.
Oh, not all the way to the street.
Yeah, no, you can't. Well, it cuts it, it cuts it off, because we're, they're talking about this, this corner down here.
Yeah, I think my interpretation of that email is adding a sidewalk on the right side of the existing curb cut into the dining hall.
Let me, let me read, let me read it one more time now that we're all...
Extending it to Prospect Street.
Now that we're all looking at something. "DPW Engineering requires the proposed new concrete sidewalk improvements to meet city specs." So was there some that were listed on the site?
This sidewalk going in, in front of the...
There's some in front of the dining hall now, and then it starts...
No, no, I know, I'm asking, so, so all this stuff right here is new? This, this line that runs along View?
There's no sidewalk there now.
Okay. But, right, but do you have any sidewalk proposed at all, was my question?
Yes.
Yes. That, right, so that line that I'm pointing to is new proposed sidewalk, correct? That's what I was asking, okay.
There's no sidewalk on View Street.
No, no, I know, I know. "Engineering respectfully requests Applewild School to extend the new concrete sidewalks to Prospect Street with ADA compliant pedestrian curb ramps at existing crosswalk, as well as a new ADA compliant pedestrian curb ramp at the corner of View and Prospect, which would serve to provide a crosswalk across Prospect Street to the existing sidewalk."
There is no crosswalk there now.
Right, bottom right-hand corner of that, yeah.
Yeah, right, down here, yeah.
So there's only one strip of sidewalk, right in front of the dining hall, from the driveway entrance into the dining hall? See there? Way to the right-hand side? So there's one strip there, and then, yeah, so just the length, and then the new sidewalk, from my gathering, from the site plan, is to going towards up View Street, in front of the new complex, to the other driveway, Applewild driveway. So it's just from driveway to driveway on the Applewild frontage.
Correct.
At this point.
I'm pulling in the, the street scene right now, if you bear with me for one second.
Sure.
Yes, I mean, even, even the sidewalk on Prospect is on the other side of Prospect.
Right, correct.
And it's asphalt and not in great shape. So you wouldn't be tying it in really to anything.
Previously, Applewild extended that sidewalk all the way up to the, past the field to the house, to, on the opposite side of Prospect Street, so they already, they did extend that sidewalk all the way up.
So, so the, this is, this is not getting touched, what's in front of the dining commons? So it's just adding a new concrete sidewalk along that stretch?
The sidewalk going there, too.
Where the new building is? Yeah, there's a portion of the... My suggestion is to talk to engineering and the commissioner and see what was meant by that, because I don't think it benefits you, I don't think it benefits the city, I shouldn't say you. I don't think it benefits the city connecting that to Prospect, because there's nothing to connect it to. There's no sidewalk there.
Well, I think that's what they're getting at, is across the street, the sidewalk. So my understanding of that comment, as we're all just reading it tonight, is that corner where the Applewild sign is, and there's a, there's a tree, take the tree down and where it's grass, put a sidewalk there, have an ADA curb cut at that corner, and then provide a crosswalk to get you across the street to the paved sidewalk on Prospect. Does that make, does that, did I explain that?
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, it's all landscaped right now to actually put in a...
Put a sidewalk right where that tree is, and come all the way to the corner, have a ramp, and then put a crosswalk to get to the sidewalk across the street. That's how I understand that, you know?
Mm-hmm. That's much a clean, that's a much cleaner view.
There you go.
I guess...
Yes, we had just provided sidewalk in front of the project.
Right, it was just in front of the, as a project.
Just to, to service, like, there's no sidewalks on, on View Street.
Well, so, I mean, as with all our approvals, you know, we'll, we'll, the condition will reflect, you know, coordinating with and, and working with DPW to, to answer the questions and comments from department review, as we always do. So it's just a question of how you mitigate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, it's to what extent, all the, is it an off-site improvement? It's not a special permit, right, or, or a site plan? So, man, I know Applewild has been doing, doing a lot, so it's, I'm sure we can, we can, we can talk and...
Well, and that's why I said, it's not something, it's not something I want to hash out, because it's not a comment that I had, so you can...
It's a planning comment.
What's that?
It's a planning comment, though. I mean, it's, it's, the city's asking to extend, basically, city infrastructure. It's going to be a city sidewalk.
Yeah.
And it is not a special permit?
Yeah, I, I don't...
So it's kind of like, you could look at it as, yeah, it's recommend, you know, recommendation, but I don't think it's a...
I understand the comment.
A requirement to do that?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
And I don't know that was any even crosswalk proposed, who was proposing the, who's going to submit a proposal for a crosswalk to actually connect it to it?
Right, I mean, it's, it wasn't part of our project to begin with, so it's...
In the past, there was a courtesy extension of the sidewalk that went up to the field further up Prospect Street, so that, that was sidewalk one, goes, now it goes all the way up towards more the entrance ways of the, of Applewild, so that was performed in the past, I think with the dining hall, they did the dining hall with that, so. Which, I have to say, was more beneficial to, that is a very heavily used stretch of walking for a lot of people on Prospect Street, so that was very beneficial for that. So doing like the smaller, that smaller piece on View Street, I don't know that that's going to be of a, of a larger benefit there.
Well, then, I mean, if that's the case, I suppose we'll have to decide if, because we usually, we usually take department comments as a whole, although they're usually more, it's usually less suggestion like that and more straightforward things, so...
But it is off-site improvement, so...
So that's what I was going to say. Do we just say everything but that in the DPW comment is, you know, part of the...
Well, they have to do all the utility connections and things that are required in order to get things and access to the site, but the, I don't know that that, I mean...
Yeah. I don't disagree with you. I don't think it serves a necessary, I don't think it serves a big purpose.
I don't think we can require, we can require it, we can just ask, you know, look at it as a recommendation to that, and they could talk about with DPW whether that, you think that you want to accommodate that, or it's necessary, if there's some other, anything else that could be done.
They don't bring it up, it's definitely a no, so, it's just a, would you please?
Yeah, I understand.
But I understand that the answer may be no, so...
I mean, I understand the comment, I think it's, you know, when you're looking at, you know, master planning and trying to extend sidewalks for the benefit of, of the public, it's, it's a completely valid comment, absolutely. I understand where, where it's coming from.
Yeah. I have a recommendation of just putting more grass seed along Prospect Street, all the way up in front of the nice stone wall over there, because a lot of, it's just on the, you know, presentation spec there. All the, which is going to go up to the new dormitory up that way, so cleaning, cleaning up that whole edge line going all the way up would be a good boon to the campus. For that, too. Are there any other, is there anybody else from the public? Yes, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's, sorry, Aaron LePan. I live at 60 View Street. My wife spoke a few minutes ago. First, I just want to say I agree with everything that my wife and neighbor said, and I know between this meeting and last meeting, we brought up a bunch of concerns. Thank you to the school for making adjustments and changes. Just two quick questions. I think in one of the 3D views, it showed some mechanicals on top in the back corner near the Anson Building. I thought, Paul, last meeting, you recommended moving those on the inside in the section of roof that was more near the loop, if I remember that incorrectly, I apologize, but curious on that. And, yeah, the mechanicals that are behind the, the wall, I thought you mentioned bringing them on the inside, like the, the flat space that's not in use. Just a question there.
Yep.
And the other being, we were in the car on the way over at the beginning of the meeting, and I believe you guys were talking about another item. There was something about bleachers and bleacher space and required parking per...
Perch, yeah.
I missed the beginning, so I didn't get the context, but there's going to be, you know, two basketball courts and a full-size pool. Is there, you know, tons of bleachers there? Is there anything in that that should apply here that they would be obligated to add more parking? That's it.
Schools are exempt from a lot of those requirements, and we, we can control, I think it's, the term is adequate modifications to parking area in bulk when we deal with the Dover Amendment, we deal with sites like this, so it's, is there adequate parking? Not, is there a certain number? And it's, it's a very low bar that we...
Let's see.
That they have to get over. So it's just because it's a school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Educational...
I mean, the million-dollar thing question is, and Mike had brought this up, I think, I think it was Mike when we had met on Friday, was, and there's absolutely nothing that you guys can do about this, nor the city, but the question then becomes, you know, someday 54 View or all of these buildings get sold to a private developer, you know, then what happens when there's not enough parking? And obviously, the uses, the uses would have to fall under their required, you know, you know, components in our zoning ordinance, but it's, it's an interesting question, especially with something like View, 54 View, where you have a boarding house, which isn't allowed without a, a special permit, I think, from the, from the ZBA, or at least a major site plan, but that's another conversation for another day.
I guess the question would be, like, student enrollment, and does student enrollment change at all with the addition of the...
No, not, this project is really to replace deficient and lacking facilities. Many of the buildings that are coming down are, well, besides being loaded with asbestos and other non-functioning mechanical equipment, they're, they're undersized and they, they're beyond their useful life, and so it's really, it's not, it's not a driver for increasing enrollment, it's to provide the facilities that the school is looking to offer their current student body.
Can you answer Ms. LePan's other question about where the mechanicals were moved and why they weren't moved off the, the top left side?
The way, the way the site, you know, works, because, you know, View Street obviously comes up a hill, and then going up the driveway to Anson is, you know, is going up to where there, there's a couple of parking spaces. We need that wall, that parapet wall, regardless of whether there's equipment on that or not, because one thing, because we were cutting this building so deep into the hillside there to, you know, reduce the, the overall height, that we don't want the students to have an ability to jump three feet and be on the roof and have full reign of the, the surroundings. So we have that mechanical, we put the mechanicals there because we have walls basically on four sides to screen them. It seems like a logical place to do it. That, that's why they ended up there. Now where the, to the left of the gym, where that room steps down, where there's an area of PV, that's where the two gymnasium units were, correct? And those have moved to the right-hand side of the gym, adjacent to where the existing dining hall is. So those are the two units that moved.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then, to readdress some of the, the parking aspects, it's the, where the student population remains the same, the same thing goes for like the dining hall, and now it's the same students, so we're not counting all the spaces over again because of the floor space, it can be the same floor space in each of the buildings.
Right.
But I guess we do like to, and as Paul mentioned previously, and as you mentioned, that they'll be exploring also the additional parking and partial of the field area for overflow parking, looking at that, so whether even if it starts to, as crushed stone or whatnot, but to be able to accommodate.
We've had our landscape architect look at that, that will require, I don't know if you folks know, but there's a, there's a finger of wetlands that runs up, sort of parallel with Prospect Street there. So portions of the existing field and portions of where kind of that driveway comes down are within the 100-foot buffer, so any, you know, permanent parking in there, we would have to, you know, the school will have to engage engineers and everyone to go through the conservation, to design a system, and then go through the conservation commission process. So we didn't want to necessarily tie that into this project, even though eventually the school wants to do that.
It'll probably just have to be in their long-term planning, especially if they anticipate some large-scale events at this facility.
Right.
You know, the, the plan will have to be that at some point in the future, they, they have a plan for large-scale off-site parking.
Right.
Accommodate that. And you, there is additional parking also with the new complex to the north, and you, there's a better interconnecting network through the campus for that parking?
Yes, yeah, there's sort of, kind of a cart path right now that goes, I don't know if folks know the campus very well, but there's an outdoor pool, well, that, that's going to be taken away, but there's kind of a cart path that connects up by the wood shop and up to where the new dormitory is. There, there is additional parking as a part of that project that was added at the dormitory.
Yeah, and the pool location might eventually be a location for some...
Right.
Auxiliary parking.
Yeah, it's one of the few flat areas of campus, because they probably flattened it out to put the pool in.
Right, exactly, yeah. Okay. There's no other hands raised in virtual.
Okay. All right. Any other further comment? No, virtually?
One, yes.
Yeah, please come to the podium, yep.
One of you, Paul or Paula, asked about, made a comment about whether this is like being built for future stuff, or whether it's a replacement, and the response was that it's a replacement. And I don't know how that figures into the conversation, or like, you know, how relevant it is, but I, I, the current gyms are, are just gyms. There's no current gigantic indoor swimming pool, there's no squash courts that need to be replaced, and I do think it's fair to say, and I, and it would be transparent to say, that this is about building future enrollment for the school. I don't think that's necessarily a problem, but like, it's definitely about that. Lots of new dorms, lots of, you know, I mean, we've been told as much at, at the neighborhood meetings, that the current gyms don't appeal to the high-tuition families that the school needs to bring in as part of a reasonable component of making the school sustainable, financially viable, right? I understand that. I, I don't know. As, as the nearest neighbor, just would rather that these things were, we could just, like, have them put out there the way they are, right? There's no squash courts right now, there's no giant indoor, you know, pool, and there's, there's not like large sporting, sports meets or two at a time, like we heard in the last meeting, that could be going on. But that is definitely what, what the new gym will allow. And it's going to be really, the kids are going to love it. I said that last time, right? I, you know, the, the school has some kind of restricted gift opportunity, it's seizing the moment, it makes sense. The school would be bananas to say no to it, right? I get it. But, yeah, it's not, it's not just a replacement, guys, it's a really, really big new thing smack in the middle of our neighborhood, and the respectful way to advance it is to acknowledge that. Thanks.
Thank you. Question, what is the current enrollment size of the school? No.
360.
360.
I think Mike had a question, Paul.
One minute.
Mike had a question, as Hannah raised.
May I use the remainder of my time?
You can come to the podium.
Okay, I'm trying to keep it brief. So thank you, everyone, appreciate the, the feedback and the interaction. Just a couple of things, right? 181-9561 talks about minimizing volume cut and fill, right? This is going to be exorbitant. Number of trees to be removed, six-inch caliber. They've removed every mature tree in the area. That's okay, as well. Minimize the length of the removed stone walls. They've removed the whole stone wall, right? But that's okay. The point I'm getting at is, we respectfully ask that there are some accommodations towards the abutters, okay? We talked about the fence. This is a foundation that is basically funding this whole project, right? So asking for, you know, some, some basic accommodations, replacement of the fence, if this is a $40 million project, $50,000 in the fence is 1/100 of a percent of the project, very minimal. We're going to go through two years of construction, two years of our lives of trucks, things beeping, blasting, cement trucks. That's okay. We, we are on board, we're, we're good neighbors to the school, but there's a lot of impact to us. The, the comment that I made about the rear entryway, the corner that faces us, nobody addressed it. The board didn't address it, the attorney, the attorney, the architect didn't address it. You know, Paul, you sent us away with a good feeling last week where the mechanics that are in the southwest corner were going to get moved to the inbound side where the court is. That was great, we went away with a good feeling, but those didn't get moved, okay? Now we have solar added that adds to our, our visual again. That's okay, they, they're allowed by a matter of right. There's a small roof line that does abut us. I mean, it would be nice, maybe if there wasn't solar on that small portion of the roof. Again, asking the board and the architect, you know, work with us as neighbors. We're not here against the project, we're in favor of it, but it, there's a huge impact to us. And everything in site plan speaks to accommodations and at the fact that there, there will sometimes be some expense towards, you know, kind of making the whole project go well, look well, and be well-rounded. And everything in site plan speaks to accommodations and at the fact that there, there will sometimes be some expense towards, you know, kind of making the whole project go well, look well, and be well-rounded, okay? So, you know, again, I, I still think there are some things that haven't got answered. It'd be nice that maybe the architect says, okay, we're taking out the wall, but maybe we can build the small stone wall that's similar to the one that's there in front. Not a major cost to this stuff, but we're just asking, you know, we talked about light all night. You can talk about candles, you can talk about downlighting. I'm a visual person. All I can tell you is that the school, the house next door, the boarding house, that lights up like a nightlight, right? This is going to light up like a nightlight because you're going to put 50 lights somewhere, okay? And we're okay with it, but it'd be nice to see some of this. And we appreciate everything everybody's done. We just hope that you consider some conditions that are concrete that will be a benefit to everybody in the project long-term. Thanks.
Thank you.
While we rang the bell.
Before you leave, Mike, because I did want to talk about, I was going to mention it af, before you, well, at, at the end of this, but I was going to mention you, because we finally have an elevation that faces, this is the side you're talking about, right? That you had an issue with this entryway? This is, this is the entryway that you were telling me you had a problem with, and I saw this and I thought it looked good. I, I, maybe, I don't know.
If you go to a different view, I can.
Well, this is, this is the only one that, the reason why I was going to bring it up was this is the only one that has that view. We have the original, we have this, which is, as you and I talked about, there's no view that way.
Yes.
So that picture is facing this way.
Yes. The, the entrance that I was referencing, okay, and the solar panel array that I'm referencing is closest to 54 view where the driveway is.
Hold on one second, let me, because Paula had mentioned, so this is the view from your front porch that they had just provided, that I just, we just talked about today. So this is the View Street side.
Yeah.
But, but I, I thought when you and I talked, your problem was with the entryway.
I don't have a problem with anything.
Well, no, well.
Just have some concern.
Right, right. And I'm, so my, it was my impression when we talked on Friday that your issue was the entryway that's on that driveway side, which is that, right there.
The corner entrance, that's.
Okay, the one, so the one on the corner of the building?
Yes, yes.
So, so that's, so that's this one right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, you know, the, the, you can look at all the pictures, but this is a 35-foot tall building that's hundreds of feet long, right? And, you know, we're just looking for some architecture that just kind of softens it so we're not kind of looking at an Amazon building, right? And I know we had mentioned some kind of stonework and pillar work like down at the cafeteria, and the architect, you know, wasn't too keen on that. But, you know, what, what can be done, right? That's all.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
I think this somehow should be a work in progress and, again, you know, strive to work with us, you know? We get a little concerned when, you know, the transformer got moved, and that was great. We all appreciated it. Now it may have to come back. Well, can that transformer be put down in the courtyard area? Why does it all have to be, impact the neighbors, right? Just asking for a little bit of consideration through the project. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's always tricky, and, and Mike, I'm sure you understand this, being a board member, that when you talk about aesthetics, you're talking about personal opinion, which it, it becomes very tricky to quantify, because, I mean, something might look good to you and then not to the pans, or something might look good to you and not to the board. So whenever you're talking about aesthetics, that's a very hard thing for us to quantify, to, to, because I look at that and I say, I would think it was the, and I, I don't want to speak, I don't know, were you the architect? So I, I would think it's the architect's plan to do the, you know, wood grain or wood siding to purposefully, you know, tone it down versus the, you know, the, the harder stone and everything else. I, I don't know. So it's, it's definitely something that we can convey. I just don't know how you.
Is there, I know particularly like that doorway, do you put like a little awning or something over the, but does it make it more pronounced, you know, versus it being the emergency door?
Yeah, I mean, we have a transom above the door. We could take that out. I mean, we need, we need the means of egress door. That's just required by building codes. So the way the plan lays out, we have to have an egress door there.
Yep.
We can, you know, and we have, the emergency light only goes on in case of an emergency. So the lights aren't on there. We can eliminate if that's, if that's what folks want to see, we can potentially eliminate the, the glass that's above to reduce the overall height of the opening and potentially put, you know, a little slope-proof canopy or something on that. But it's, obviously it won't change the overall height of the building.
Right. Something like, yeah. Would that be something that would be?
And I don't want to make recommendations in architectural design, just making comments as to just, you know.
Do that.
As I always say, pretend you live next door.
So I guess rather than just, they'd rather than just look like a door into the flat wall to have some kind of relief on it, that would be probably a little something. Is there overhang on the first floor? Whether you have the transition from like the stone over to the, the white, the gray material on the front?
If you, if you.
Is that a flat front?
No, it, there's, there's a little bit of depth to it. If you go, mm, it was only, it was one or two views down from that. I can probably explain it better than this, that one there.
Yeah, so is there like overhang there? Is there like downlighting or anything from?
Yeah, what we tried to do, again, because of the size of the building relative to the neighborhood, is vary some of the materials and vary, kind of define the masses with different materials, so it just wasn't one 200-foot-long building in one plane. That's one of the reasons why, one of our original plans, I had the squash courts outflush with the end wall of the gym, and I had the student center outflush, and it became a really long wall. So we purposely tried to push, you know, the, the volumes of the building reflect the program space and so I pushed them back to try and get some relief along that edge. We've cantilevered the front roof line over on the View Street side to create a sort of horizontal shadow line. And then by varying the materials vertically, so we've got, you know, the building grows out of a stone base, and then it turns into the different types of metal panels, and then up at the, sort of the clear story level, we've got a combination of either the translucent panels and/or that sort of dark green color, because that's one of the colors throughout some of the, the campus and the school's colors. We try to introduce that both on this, you know, the clear story panels at the higher level. And I think the banding helps to, the horizontal aspect helps to bring the scale down to some degree, but it was a conscious effort to, to break the materials up, to try and break the scale up some. And then we've, we've, you know, we have a horizontal canopy element that's kind of tough to see in that photo, that, that the columns are along a walkway that kind of connects over to the dining hall. So there's a horizontal element there. We can look to try and do something similar at the upper entry, you know, off of the squash court.
Could you see that with the column, if you, like, if you did have, are they like the standard, like a white column that connects over to the dining hall?
Well, we weren't, we didn't, see, right now, there's a couple of existing wings that come probably 15, maybe 20 feet from the dining hall. And it always, since the dining hall was built, we knew that at some point, something would happen with these existing buildings, well, now is that point. So I think opening up that sort of pedestrian corridor between the new building and the dining hall really invigorates that part of the campus. It's still a transition way from the younger students across this, across View Street at the Marshall Building coming across, and it gives them a way up to the other parts of, of campus through a, more of a park-like setting. But we didn't necessarily want to connect the buildings. You know, the, the size and scale of this building and the types of volumes that are required, it's extremely difficult to make it look like, you know, a 4,000 or 5,000-square-foot home. It just isn't that animal. That's why we've tried to vary the materials and the, and the massing to try and help define the spaces, but not make it so monolithic.
I'm trying to think the term I'm looking for. So in that front where you transition from the gray to the light gray, and that frontage over there, just, just tossing this out there, similarly that you have on campus, like the, like some white columns, and then you just have the, the posts that go over to the building, almost like, you know, you have a vine or something like that. But just aesthetically, almost make it look like a walkway, or like to, to bring that, that feeling or in of that, that historic nature, that you could have, you know, creeping vines or something going over them, but. Comes out towards where you have like the, you know, the tree area, not that far, but something over your walkway, it just comes out, extends a certain number of feet that you have like a colonnade of some columns that go attach over to the building. Do that kind of like, you know, either bring that historical kind of piece in, or was it actually, you know, subjectively work, not work with the design, but just kind of like tie it in a little bit, and soften that look to historic?
One of the thoughts I had is that horizontal element, we kept it kind of in the modern vernacular, because that's what the rest of the building is. But one of the other conscious efforts we made on, on that kind of courtyard between the dining hall and the new building is, we have a sloped metal roof that's the same height as the dining hall. So your pedestrian scale, you know, the building's basically one story, and then it slopes up and gets higher as you go up, but it steps away from you, like you'd have in an urban setting. We could look potentially at changing that canopy style. Maybe that becomes a sloped roof or a shed, shed type of roof, where there's a little bit of a, similar to the metal roof that's on the side, which, you know, again, another, more of a prominent foreground element to help, again, layer the facade a little bit.
Like I said, that's the problem when you talk about aesthetics, like the conversation could just go on forever.
Yeah, then you start with, well, I'm not sure that a metal canopy is going to like help, help.
Well, no, I would just, sloped roof, I mean, you know.
Right, with the sloped roof, but yeah.
My point to that, my point to that comment was, unless we have specific changes to the plan, it's hard to talk generalities.
It is.
So, you know, unless there's specific changes, and I think the material, I think the materials on the elevations will look, will look good, and, and I think it will be a very, you know, a, a very beautiful building. I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with what, you know, some of the neighbors said the first meeting about, you know, it's, it's not exactly a historic building in a historic neighborhood, but at the same time, you're building a modern contemporary building that can tie in with the neighborhood. They, you don't have to have uniformity among all property types. So I, I think that it, it will look good, but I do certainly understand, and I do think that it will behoove you, when, especially when you're working on, you know, that left-hand side, if there are any suggestions that you can tie in that aren't materially different that, that, you know, the neighbors, you know, might see, especially with that, you know, Mike was talking about that, that front left corner, you know, that, again, it's, a lot of this is going to do just being a good neighbor and just, you know, doing the right thing. I, I think we, we have permit conditions that I've written down that Paul, that we'll all talk about when we get to that point, that I think alleviate most of the things that, that the applicants were talking about, excuse me, that the abutters were talking about, but we'll have to get there when we get there.
I, I do agree with what the vice, vice chair is saying, and I also agree with, with what the architects have presented. It's so difficult to take a building of this size and this scale and make it looks like, like something that is, looks like a house in the neighborhood. It's a totally different building. And I think the architectural plans that you presented for the building are, are great. They look fantastic. It is very modern-looking. I think they're well-thought-out, and I think when it is built, people will look at it and say, wow, what a great-looking building. It, it's tough to say, okay, I just want to add a different entrance, because by adding a different entrance, it may throw off the entire look of the building. So I'm, I'm kind of all right with the look of the building the way it is.
Okay. Are there any further public comments? All right. Any virtual?
Uh-uh.
No, okay. Do we have enough information this evening?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to close?
Is this a public hearing? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, it is. A motion's been made with a second to close the hearing. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Discussion.
So do you want to just talk conditions? Because I have a whole bunch of them.
Go ahead.
So I, I suppose I'll start with, these are all over the place, so I apologize. But I'll start with parking. The no-construction vehicles parking on Bond, View or Prospect. I did, as I was right, as we were talking about that about 10 minutes ago, I did add to that, which would be a permit condition that the, while I certainly understand that the property owners can't control every aspect of where people park, but that they, that they make it written policy and procedures that event parking not happen on Bond, View or Prospect. So whenever you have functions, you direct your patrons to park elsewhere. Provide a landscaped area in front of 54 View Street, preferably with mulch and plantings. And when I say preferably, that's a permit condition. Mulch and plantings, make it look nice. Coordinate with the abutters on View Street along the trees along the property line that we had talked about, as far as, you know, how they get planted. I will say, because I know how we've dealt with this in the past, if there's, if there's an issue with, what is it, coming to an agreement on that, that the, the board can settle the dispute if that ends up becoming an issue at that point. So just keep that in mind. The property owner to, to research and, and, and look at feasibility of a future parking plan, including off-site parking across the street on Prospect, on their other parking lot or elsewhere on the site, in the event that you have larger-scale activities at, at this property. Explore the possibility of extending the sidewalk to Prospect according, based upon the comment that DPW had. We had talked about removing the bushes at View and Prospect, which I think was already done, but I think a permit condition would be that you maintain them back from the, from the view of, of blocking car visibility on the street. All lighting to be dark, so I comply and, and in keeping with the exhibits presented. The porta-potties during construction to be located away from the residences on View and Bond. We had talked about, you had talked about removing or reutilizing the components of the retaining wall on site. The trash we had talked about is going to be in the existing location, so no trash elsewhere on site. Team activity, this is one thing I think you had agreed on, team activities in large events to go no later than 10:00 PM. We had talked about that in the last meeting. I think that was the consensus that that wasn't a problem. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That sounds like, if I recall correctly.
I'm pretty certain that was, that was, I just want to make sure. Subject to the DPW review of Stonewater and Utility locations, which I think we have kind of hashed out. The, um, provide screening around the transformer pad, regardless of location, screen it with, I don't know if the board wants to specifically say, sound-ending fencing or plantings. I don't necessarily have a preference, whatever's better for aesthetics in View, but I guess, yeah, right. Yeah, sound-ending fencing and then some plantings around it, most likely. The, have an odor mitigation plan in the event of, we had talked about this last time, in the event of noxious odors from the pool, but I think you had said that that's not a problem. So if, whatever your pool guy can put forward to say that, you know, if there are issues, this is how we solve them. Inverters are inside the building, and, and I'm only making these as notes of conditions because they're things we talked about. So if they change, we just come back and we'll have to talk about them. But electrical components, the inverters, and whatever other electrical components, especially to the PV panels, are inside the building. Unless Unitil tells you or us otherwise, no other utility pole locations. And again, that's just, that'll have to be something that, if it comes up that way, we can say, hey, this is where it's going, so we can tell people. I'm just going, I have them all over the place here, so you have to bear with me. Paula, did you have other stuff?
Well, there was a couple of asks as well, if you, the feasibility of eventually lay up the belt, updating the chain link fencing along View and Bond Street, you know, black-coated vinyl or something along those lines, or if this, if it's even necessary if you're doing a chain link on the inside, or.
I think, I think certainly the permit condition should be that, that the fence be replaced, or if the existing fence is deemed to be inadequate. be replaced, or if the existing fence is deemed to be in adequate condition, and I personally did not think it was in bad condition, it definitely needs to be repaired and finished.
Just like stabilized at a very.
Yeah, and, and, you know, like I said, you look at it and there's, you know, the top of it's just kind of an, it's in an unfinished state. You know, straighten the fence, clean it out, make it look new, you know, make it look good, and, you know, if it's easier or if the, the, if you guys want to research some alternatives, I know Mike had mentioned a four-foot fence. I think that might go counter to what the purpose of the fence is, to keep people out of that area, but, you know, to kind of look at, you know, definitely fixing if not replacing that fence.
What else would be, also screening around in the condenser, the AC units on 52 View, when we're talking about some of the landscaping over there, talked of, those are other, you know, it's like off the site but on the site, part of that site plan, kind of aspect is to mitigate also the light intrusion. I know there's done like the shading, but it looks like apparently from the photos.
Oh, that's the other one. That's the other one I have. Move, move or screen that light on the Ensign Building, the photo that we saw up there. I mean, I think that's an easy fix. I think that's something that you could do quite, quite quickly. That, because that, that photo made it look, you know, particularly intrusive.
But adding that landscaping in between the two homes to, to, yeah, and then coordinating with the, like Paul mentioned, with the abutter on the location of the trees, because I think the rendering, it like stopped at a certain location where then you had a clear view of the new gymnasium building where you might want to continue that, that buffer.
Can we please not put the transformer on the corner for visual and audible reasons? Because it was relocated and now it sounds like the board's saying it can be put there again.
It was relocated back down the driveway, so we're talking about the.
That's the only place it shows on the site plan. We have not talked about moving it, but the LaPans had talked about moving it closer to you. So, so that, I.
Okay. We're talking, so we did say sound ending and screening it where it's located on the present plan. So unless there's other, other means why the applicant needs to move it, then they'll come forward and ask to move it.
Yeah, but as of right now, wherever it is on the plan is where it is.
For that.
Got anything else?
No, you talked about reuse of the granite pieces on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Parking, I guess it also would be just adhering to the city code on construction times.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's pretty, I think we'll have, does any other board member have anything else they want to make sure is mentioned?
I'll set Paul.
Okay. We talked, you know, dark sky compliant, everything that they've presented.
Yeah, and obviously it's subject to all of the submittals that we've talked about ad nauseam, so I do want to commend the team that I think it was a very good job of providing, especially the 3D renderings and, you know, all the answers to the, to the city requests. I think that it was a very well organized presentation and it's, makes it easier when you, as hard as it was to go back and forth on the hundred things, it makes it easier to have all those things. So thank you very much, guys.
I understand it's a very big project and currently is a two-year, 18, you said 18 months or so, 25?
I was particularly impressed with the, with the thought you put into the lighting situation. I mean, even with removing the tall poles and putting in lit bollards and then even paying attention to the light type, the color of the light, I think it's going to be a great looking campus.
Thank you.
When all the lighting gets up.
So, so the only other condition, just so that everyone is on the same page, is just our standard permit condition. So let's, you know, we'll say a year to start, two years to finish. And then, you know, we'll, that gives you a window of time, and then if we go over, then you'll have to just explain why you've gone over, which.
Was there a specific water sewer, just kind of like a making sure from Ryan that we get permits or anything? Like wasn't there, I thought you mentioned something.
So, so what we usually do is we condition approvals on the department reviews, and his comment was just, and you want me to reread it?
No, I just want to make sure that that's covered. Like I think it's just making sure that we coordinate for the water and sewer permits. I just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah, that's, those are all standard conditions that, obviously there's conditions that we don't mention that are just uniform conditions for everything, but that, that will be part of it. They, you know.
Any curb cut modifications.
Yeah. Utility location plans, if you have to have any of the, which I assume most of these are in here. Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, because I want to see the full utility site plan, everything to go over that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One more thing. I'll just ask, just very generally, just maybe provide like a status update so that we know, like this is going to be two-year construction, to maybe provide every, you know, three or, well, I would say every four month, three months, like an update, just so it keeps everybody in the loop about what's going, what the, what the phasing's going to be.
And.
Like we're going to demo between X and Y in the next six months, this is what's going to happen, so.
This might be unfair for you, but I bet Mr. Urbishaw might know. How's the dorm project going since we're on timelines? Are you, because I think Amy was saying the original plan was, what, September, October or something like that? Are you still hoping to hit that?
October.
Okay. So by the end of the year, you're hoping to wrap up the dorm? Perfect. Just curious, while I had you here, figured I'd ask.
I think that's all I have.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Applewood School project at 120 Prospect Street, subject to the conditions noted.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made with the second, and we will take roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your time.
Still have my nine million open windows here.
I'm freezing. Is anybody else freezing?
It's cool in here, but I'm never cold, so.
I'm actually comfortable.
Sorry.
You're comfortable.
All right, let me see. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We have before us this evening, welcome back Tracy. Thank you. So Tracy has returned to the meeting. Be it read into the minutes on the transcript. Our third public hearing this evening is the zoning act to consider a temporary moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities. The moratorium would be in effect through May 31st, 2025. During the moratorium period, the city would undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities and related uses, and shall consider adopting new zoning ordinances to better address the impact and construction of the same in the city. And I think there was a letter to the city council.
Yep, bear with me.
To, is it further explained?
I don't know if you're going to want to read it because I believe it's lengthy, if memory serves correctly, but that's right. I'll put it up on the screen. Twenty-four.
It should be a moratorium memo to planning board.
So you want the memo? I have the moratorium language and the memo.
Let's see.
The, the memo's relatively short. I can read it if you want.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll put it up on the screen so people can follow along if they'd like. It says, so this is from Liz Murphy to the council president, to our board chair, and to the council. Please find attached here to a draft temporary moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities. Under the city's zoning bylaws, a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility is defined as a solar photovoltaic system that occupies more than 1,750 square feet of surface area, that is structurally mounted on the ground and is not roof-mounted, and has minimum nameplate capacity greater than 10 kilowatt DC. The city recognizes the need to promote the creation of large-scale ground-mounted solar installations while also balancing the need to protect the city, the public health and welfare of residents in Pittsburgh and the conservation of city's available forested land and open space by which greenhouse gases are reduced through carbon capture and sequestering. This moratorium will allow for the completion of the National River Watershed Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Climate Resiliency Plan, the city's climate action plan, and given recent cases that involve significant stormwater runoff challenges, the development of land disturbance regulations. The results of these will inform the adoption of an appropriate and effective zoning ordinance, allowing and encouraging large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaics facilities while considering the above referenced factors. My understanding is that both the planning board and city council must hold a public hearing on the matter and vote on a recommendation to the city council, council as a whole, although a joint public hearing is an option. Due to numerous constraints, the two bodies are not likely to hold these public hearings during the month of May and may not be able to conduct the hearings until June.
So here we are as the planning board conducting the hearing aspect from the planning board. This is, would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance? Is there any other amendment to the zoning ordinance that follows those procedures?
And, and just to be clear, this is just for the moratorium?
Yes.
This isn't about what, how, what we think about solar? This is only about, is the moratorium okay? So we don't need to talk about what our beliefs are on solar, what should change? This is just, should there be a moratorium until things are hashed out? That's it.
And presently is, correct me if I'm wrong, Chantel too, my understanding, as I think it was like when January, December, January, when it was published about a change to the bylaw for solar, there's a pause in that already for any applications for solar. This is actually just bringing a little to the forefront of an actual timeline of trying to say, yes, there's going to, there's an official pause on it, and this is what's going to be studied and want to make some potential changes.
That's correct.
All right. So that's what's before us, so they're looking for a board, holding a public hearing, taking some public comment, again, on the effectiveness of maybe even like about the moratorium and the length of time and what it's going to be looking at. There's going to be other opportunities for actually looking at those other aspects and content, but what to look at for, for changing the zoning ordinance. This is for applying, changing the ordinance just to add the moratorium for that study at this time.
The planning board, I believe the planning board and the city council will have public hearings.
Yes.
On the actual context of what people believe should be changed in the, in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm. So if anybody would like to, if what, speak on the matter, just please be there. Come to the podium, state your name for the record, an address, thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Kuchar, Ward 3 City Councilor. I'm here to speak in favor of the moratorium. I was the one that actually submitted the petition after Councilor Fleming and I submitted the petition to change the zoning ordinances to improve the residents' rights when it comes to having a ground-mounted solar in their neighborhood. That was approved through the zoning board to take a look at it. It was also approved through the city council to take a look at it. This moratorium is just intended for a brief period of time while the two, while the two bodies discuss the changes that need to be made to the zoning ordinance. It's kind of a, it's kind of like a, just pumping the brakes a little bit to kind of slow down the developments that are going on currently, or the proposed developments that are currently proposed. And, you know, we really would like to see this moratorium put in place. It's only a year. You know, these projects take years upon years. One-year delay is not unfeasible. It's not going to put anybody, they're not going to prejudice anybody. It is just a slow, a slow boat to say, hey, look, let's just see what we're going to do, how we're going to change it, and right now, nothing's going to happen until we do change it. So I ask that you approve this. Thank you.
I don't know if it was mentioned at the very beginning, Paula. You probably did, but I'm just reading the actual, and it's now the, the moratorium, the proposed moratorium by, I believe, our city solicitors was through May 31st, 2025.
Yes. I may not conduct a hearing until, that's what's, that was read off. Is actually, if you open up the petition, is that what it says in the, the actual language?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, without, I mean, there's, there's two sections to it. I'll read the, the first section was kind of in line with what Liz wrote. The second section says, "For the reasons set forth above and notwithstanding any other provision of the zoning ordinance to the contrary, the city hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the permits for and use of land for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities. The moratorium shall be in effect through May 31st, 2025. During the moratorium period, the city shall undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities and related uses, and shall consider adopting new zoning ordinances to better address the impact and construction of same in the city."
If there's anybody else present, I'd like to please come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Charlene Locke, so I live at 31 Gloria Ave, and I'd like to speak also in support of a temporary solar moratorium. The citywide moratorium will provide sufficient time to craft an updated ordinance that will allow the city to do the following. Equitably apply the future ordinance and limit any projects from rushing in to take advantage of the current solar ordinance before an amended one is passed. Protect both the city and solar developers from potential litigation resulting from inconsistent regulation. Conduct a siting study, which can be utilized for the adoption of new zoning ordinances, and regulate and mitigate potential environmental issues. By having the time to thoughtfully, intentionally, and lawfully plan on how to regulate where and how large-scale ground-mounted solar is installed, the city is not discouraging solar development, but is protecting its citizens, neighborhoods, and natural resources. I'd like to leave you with an eye-opening statistic. Forty-one acres are equal to 30 football fields. It seems that our choice is whether to protect as much as possible those acres of beneficial forests, farmland, and open space, or continue to convert them to clear-cut solar football fields. I ask you to please vote in favor. Thank you.
Can I make one other just side note? The planning board doesn't have a say in this. We're just, as a recommendation to the council. Just want to make that clear. We're not voting on it. We're just giving a recommendation to the council, but, but, thank you.
Everybody's.
There's no.
We don't vote on the moratorium. The city council does.
Don't you vote to advance it?
We're just going to vote our aspect to.
But no matter what we do, it goes to the city council, even if we vote against it, doesn't matter. It's just a public hearing.
Yes.
Hi, Warren Tuscola, 32 Gloria Avenue.
Okay.
And I'm here to state that I'm in favor of the proposed moratorium. The city needs to take the time to reevaluate the current zoning ordinance with regard to the impact of solar farms on residential neighborhoods. Out-of-state solar farm developers only see Pittsburgh as a revenue source. They have no interest in benefiting the city or its residents. I sincerely appreciate that all of you in the city government are working together with Pittsburgh residents to take steps that benefit Pittsburgh and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on behalf of the proposed moratorium?
Hello, my name is James Wagner, and I live at 58 Pepper Road, so this monstrosity be right in my backyard. I'm not going to get too into it. I understand this is not, I just feel like if I have a forum to speak of my displeasure with this, I'm going to take advantage of it. I'll keep it short and give you a couple things to consider. A preface that I'm not anti-solar or renewable energies, you know, quite the contrary. I think moving away from fossil fuels is a, is a, is a good thing, but the best solar ordinance and laws wasn't meant to clear neighborhoods' forests for this. It's counterintuitive and just not at the, you know, what the point of the law is. Also considering the quality of life in the neighborhood, you know, people's investments lifelong and their equity is, you know, will plummet. That will have an effect on Pittsburgh property values and make it not a desirable place to move to. If I didn't have a, you know, a two and a half percent mortgage rate, I would have been alonggone. And a little bit more just protecting, you know, wildlife, you know, this is, this is a project that's really going to benefit the few and harm the masses. It's a clear cut of that. And then just getting into water runoff, flooding, you know, we already, we don't have to get too much into that. And then I'll just leave it with just, you know, negative effects of air quality, you know, due to the dump, the. know, due to the dump, the, the grease factory, less trees, less CO2 capture, you know, winds, neighborhood temperatures rising. And then I'll just leave it with wild impact. So just wanted to get that out on, on the record and just, you know, vote in favor of really considering, you know, not letting this go and approving the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to state, everybody's testimony is welcome and valid. This is a procedure, and there's going to be more than, just wanted to reiterate, there's more than one opportunity that's going to be had, wanting the more specifics come out about what to evaluate and to look at for looking at the solar moratorium. So we're stressing that this tonight is about just passing, advancing just a moratorium, and then there's going to be meetings and many meetings in between regarding that. And so we hope that public participates in those aspects, because that's what helps generate and gear towards what those changes should be.
Yeah, so we want to just express that, it's like, it's not like you don't, you know, it's meaningless tonight because of that. It's like, this is once, this is the first piece of, this is one of the steps to be taken. So it's not that, it's, so we want to make sure that it's validating everybody's comments and concerns here is, that's part, important part of the role that, that we, that the board plays in this process, too, and the city council plays in this process. So we don't want to, you know, we want to make everybody feel included in this process. So if this is a opportunity for you to talk about it, then so be it. You can feel free to talk about it.
I just, point of clarification, I just want to, I just want to be clear, because I'm reading this, and I'm reading the last zoning petition we did, and the last zoning petition was for, for a recommendation to the city council, which is what we always do for zoning changes. There's nothing unusual about a moratorium, meaning the, the planning board does not, we're still just providing a recommendation to the city council, correct?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because the wording in our agenda is different for this than it was back in January when we did the last one. So I, I, I just wanted to be clear, because I, I know I said that to everyone, because I was confident doing this 20 years, that that was what we, what our, our point was.
We didn't have specific language then?
Yeah.
And this is actually a specific language to adopt into the, what's the word?
I understand. I understand.
I mean, if the board record says we want to change a, a piece of this, on the language or recommend, any change to the language, we could recommend that. Do we like the date, you not like the date?
So, so-
That's what's proposed, and that's what the petitioner proposed as, as the date?
Right. So, so going on to kind of where you're going with that was, you know, obviously as part of the board's recommendation, we can recommend anything to, to the city council. I do think that we, we, we do need to impress upon the council that regardless of what they do with this moratorium, whether they have a moratorium or not, that they need to start working on this. I, I can't say how frustrated I am with the city council, that we passed, we, we sent our recommendation to the city council on January 23rd. January 23rd, and there has not been one public hearing scheduled for this since January 23rd. So, you know, it, it needs to be impressed upon the council that, that regardless of what timeframes there are, that it needs to start happening, that we need to start having this conversation, because I've been involved in many zoning changes over the years, and it's very complicated. It's very hard to do. There's a lot that goes into it, especially when you get a lot of different people that have strong opinions on, on matters, as well they should. We have to, we have to put those down on paper, and then we have to see what the board likes, and then what the city council ultimately decides on. So that process needs to start. I do, I had told Paula, my initial thought was, you know, I, I had a, I have a problem with zoning moratoriums in general, in that you're saying you can't do anything until an arbitrary date in the future, because regardless of what anyone says, May 31 is arbitrary. We, I mean, we could start tomorrow, and it could be done by December, but I, I don't have a problem with it, because I hope that, that the moratorium sets an end date. Like, we need to have this done by May 31st. At the very least, it, it, it has kind of a roadmap of, let's look at what zoning changes need to be made, let's work on them in the meantime, and let's get it done by May 31st. So I originally had an issue with the moratorium, but the more I thought about it, the more it's going to take time, there's a lot that's going to go into this. I mean, we've, I know Paul and I and the rest of this board had a lot of conversation about solar when we did the zoning change two, three years ago, but at the same time, a lot's come to light since then, so it will, it'll give us some time to do all that stuff.
Another aspect could be, it's like, shall be in effect, may, through May 31, 2025. It's like, unless earlier adopted. So just so, you know, if it's, we're going through the process sooner, then it's done sooner. Yes, counselor?
I want to thank you for, for stating your opinion about, about, you know, being frustrated with the city council. I am equally frustrated. I'm hoping that this, by you pushing this forward, it's going to light a candle under, you know, the, the council's backside in order to be able to get this done, because not only am I frustrated equally as you, but my residents are as well. They want to see, they want to see this happen. They want to see, you know, their neighborhood be saved from, you know, any kind of ground-mounted solar. And this is the first step, and I thank you for expressing that. We do have a special city council tomorrow, meeting tomorrow. I will be talking with President Zarella about this, about moving this forward, getting a public hearing together, getting this moratorium official, and then we can work on the zoning change. I know I've been reviewing the proposals coming from the city solicitor, and, you know, it is being worked on, it's just not really public. But I think, you know, having more public meetings about this would be a benefit to my residents as well as the city as a whole. So I thank you very much, and, you know, I will be being a sore, a thorn in President Zarella's side in order to be able to get this done.
Thanks.
But I thank you for your comments.
Yes, there's a lot to be undertaken here with the reviews of just different aspects, and I believe the state of Massachusetts is also coming out with a whole new set of guidelines for ground-mounted solar.
I've been-
That's going to be a whole aspect, as well as battery storage. So we're going to be looking at ground-mounted, and then also be addressing battery storage, which is kind of like the separate accessory to, to this. So there's other things to look at and for criteria that's going to be expansive. And then also in land disturbance regulations, regardless of its solar or outside of solar, so looking at that. Also, on the docket, before the end of the year, you've got the aspect of the regional transit piece that we, the House had be adopted regarding multifamily development around the rail station.
Mm-hmm.
So there's going to be a lot of ordinance updates and changes that, who have public participation in-
We'll all be very busy.
Yeah. Yeah, the ZBA chair has some too, so, yeah. We all have stuff.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody virtually?
There is, but no hands raised.
No hands raised. And is there anybody else in the audience this evening that wants to speak on the moratorium that's proposed? Okay. Has anybody, any planning board member have any comment or?
I'm all set on this, Paula.
Okay.
So my, sorry. Go ahead, Alex.
I'm sorry. No, I'm, I, I think it's great that this is being brought to the attention of the planning board in the city, and hopefully we can get a resolution to this soon. But other than that, you know, I've got no, nothing else to say.
Okay. Thank you.
So my suggestion to the board would be that we recommend-
Close the hearing?
Oh, yeah, okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's made with a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say a polls. Roll call, vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Now discussion.
So, so my suggestion would be that we send it back to the council with two notes. The first being that we would suggest that the wording be May 31, 2025, or until such a time as the necessary revisions to the ordinance are made.
Oh, so that we extend past it?
No, no. I'm, I'm sorry.
Just say whichever is sooner.
May, whichever is sooner. Thank you. My point was, if we get it done in, in January, the, you only, the only point to keeping the moratorium then would be to, to, you know, to-
Yep, shall be in effect unless, unless earlier adopted, whichever is sooner.
To inhibit other projects. I mean, we have quite a few projects, aside from the one that some of the people here are for, that are, actually, probably, I think they're already permitted. Alpine's already permitted, right? Yeah, so that this wouldn't affect them, but anyway.
So unless earlier, unless earlier adopted, whichever is sooner.
Right. And then the other thing would just be that, you know, the, the planning board would suggest that public meetings be scheduled as, as soon as feasibly possible to start the process moving along.
Okay.
And that's more of just in, hey, let's get this moving type conversation.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Okay.
I'll put then the form of a motion.
With that, form of a motion.
For an affirmative recommendation.
Affirmative recommendation for the petition for the moratorium, large-scale ground-mounted soda, solar through May 31, 2025, unless earlier adopted, whichever is sooner, defined date.
I can bet.
And a second to that, and roll call, vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thank you, guys.
That concludes our hearing section this evening. All I have is, we have minutes.
I actually have a couple other business, two other business things that were just brought up tonight, so we could reasonably infer that they, they, we didn't, we wouldn't have known about them, but neither are big. The one is in asides, Chantel, I was here a little bit early for the DPW Public Works here, committee hearing, and Counselor Fleming had asked me to ask the, you and the board if we can get a status update for 432 John Fish Highway. Doing that off the top of my head, I don't know if that address is right, but, Sinemworld parking lot?
Oh, yeah, that, they're moving forward-
Yeah.
-with the paving.
What's that?
They're moving forward with the paving.
Yeah, so, so I saw today, part of what brought that up was, they have, they have pavement ripped up, and they have most of the berms in, if you haven't driven by.
I saw it ripped up.
It looks very different. But Counselor Fleming reminded me, well, she, she brought it up to my memory of, we have, we have a phasing plan for that, and there were timelines associated with that phasing plan. And if we could, if you could just ask the applicant, could you give us a status update, how you're keeping along with the timelines that were imposed, and-
I talked to the site manager, his name is Tom, what is Tom's last name? Can't remember it right now.
Yep.
Off the top of my head, but I can get that name. I went to the site, and he said they're moving forward and trying to get it all done, and they're, they're not necessarily, they're just going right through the whole phase, essentially.
So they're doing things out of order just to get them done?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
And that's fine, too. I, I think that, so Counselor Fleming is specifically looking for something.
Okay.
So if you can just say to the engineer, say, can you, I would, I would send it to the engineer, not the site manager-
Sure, sure.
And say, this is the phasing plan you had created, can you just give us an update on how things are going and how long you anticipate it to continue? Especially if they're not going on the timeline that you told us to-
Yes, exactly.
Like, how far along are you? How much longer do you have left? Especially if you're not keeping up with that phase plan that we approved.
Right, right. I can follow up, yes.
And then if you can provide, you know, if, if you get an email response, you can send it to the Counselor Fleming in the council and to us, and just hopefully give everyone some input. She seemed very curious, she wanted to know kind of where they're at.
They're very ambitious, so.
Yeah. And, and they look like they got a lot done in the last three days, so.
Yeah.
Nick was saying, Nick had some-
Detention basin.
Concerns might be the wrong word, but he, he had some questions about the, the drainage work that they were going to do, especially that detention basin. And driving past today, that's kind of where they're storing all the material now.
Okay.
So, I don't know. It'd be nice to know where they're at with that.
All right. Yeah, I will follow up.
You said they're also doing CONCOM review?
Yeah, they are. That was overlooked and from, and I guess when the project was initially started, and Herlins, working with them, as far as making sure mitig, mitigative measures are put next to the brick while they're tearing up pavement and putting new pavement down. They're probably going to the CONCOM for their August meeting, I do believe, so. They don't have a meeting in July.
They'll have to review that stormwater structure that they're proposing to.
Yeah, they probably will. Yeah, so.
And the parking lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The second one was at FATV's request or, or comment, maybe moving the September meeting back to our regularly scheduled meeting. We had talked about, we had created a, a new date for our September meeting, because we believed that it was an election day, but as Dan was nice enough to remind us, it is not. So we can have the fourth Tuesday in September, which will also allow us to be here. Otherwise, we won't be in this building.
Otherwise, we change it to the third?
Third, yeah.
Is everybody able to make?
I believe, I believe if memory serves, Lynn couldn't do the third Tuesday, and if she can't do the fourth Tuesday still, then we're in the same spot anyway. As long as everyone can do the, the, our normal meeting in September, then there's no problem. So if anyone has an issue with that, then-
Wait, the normal meeting or the, the third Tuesday?
So now it would be the fourth Tuesday, it would be back on the 24th.
Yeah, so I can't do that.
I won't be around the 24th, I'll be out of town.
Oh.
Okay.
So you know, so two people can't, so almost three, so that maybe-
We'll keep it the 17th, and we'll just have to be third floor.
Okay.
Which actually, all right, we'll, we'll, we'll have to look at the meeting schedule, because that's, shouldn't be, I don't know if it's a council night. Okay, anyway.
And then we still have our July meeting has been moved to the last day of the month, almost.
July, yeah, the 30th, correct.
Yeah.
And the 4th, the 5th.
Yes.
Which, which will be the same situation as tonight. Public Works is here first.
Yeah.
But I don't think that that's a problem. And as Liz said, even if we start 10 minutes late, so be it.
Yep, so.
Okay. And I did, not today, but a couple, a number of weeks ago, I did ask Chantel, any update on what's happening with One Oak Hill?
Um.
Because we didn't hear any.
Uh, exactly. So I sent the decisions to Lisa, was it Lisa Pollak?
Donna.
Donna Pollak, and she was working on doing enforcement. I, I did go to the building departments meeting with her and talked with the Board of Health. They've been looking to do enforcement as well. So that's supposed to be occurring. I told Donna I would also compile some minutes for her about the multiple requests we've made for the odor mitigation, and then also, I think the windows were an issue as well, since they're like falling out, so that's another concern.
So, so can I offer a suggestion?
Yes.
I didn't mention this to you, we probably, because it just occurred to me now, but I think we talked about this last month, or maybe we should, maybe we should just have some sort of interdepartmental sit-down with the Board of, with Steve Curry and maybe a Board of Health member and you and I, and-
Well, it looks like they're working on that.
I know, I know, but to all, to all figure out kind of where everyone is, because it sounds like, I know Chantel told me that the Board of Health had been talking about fines and have done fines recently.
They have.
It might be helpful, given that we're a permitting body, to say, how, you know, how far along is this, and how, you know, how imminent are additional fines or further
sanctions? Because then we can talk about, you know, calling them in for a modification of permit or something else if we have to go that route. So.
Keep us in the loop and we need to, and.
Right.
If you can ask Donna, too, about, can we, can we modify the permit?
Yeah, I can do that. See if we can get what our next steps are as far as the legalities of what, what we can do with, with this thing. So.
You know, it's a really shame, it's a shame too that they've kind of haven't responded to you because I thought we were making progress. It's, you know, even, even the Word Two councillor and I, we talked about it this week, about, you, you could still smell it, but it's, it's not as bad. It's, it's, it, something has happened there that's gotten a little bit better. But it's, it's, you know, it's still an unfortunate problem. So, anyway.
Well, I'll keep working on it and I'll, I'll update you. Hopefully I'll have more information by next meeting.
Okay.
And, and I think I mentioned this before and maybe you have, but I don't know how helpful it is. But it, it probably wouldn't hurt sending an email to CCC saying, you know, what else are our, what else are the controls to this? This is a problem that we're experiencing with, you know, one particular applicant, but they're not the only one. They're the most egregious, but they're not the only one. I've tried to do that, but they, I did never got a response. But I did it as a citizen, not necessarily as a board member, because I didn't feel comfortable saying, I'm doing this as a member of the planning board because it.
I, I do think the CCC has regulators. So I can look more into that and see if I can get in contact with that part of the CCC where.
I mean, at the very least, to let them know, hey, we're trying to solve this problem. We're doing the best we can. We could use some help.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, does CCC do like surprise inspections?
Um, I think they can. Yes.
I don't, I think it would be a good idea to maybe recommend they do it to some of the violating sites.
I mean, I mean, quite honestly, we can.
Doesn't have to be a surprise.
Our permit says that, that duly autho, duly representative autho, duly authorized representative of the city can enter upon the site. So, I mean, theoretically, the, the planning department could, but we already know what the problem is.
Yeah, you don't have to.
It's just a question of solving the problem. So.
Yeah, that's why I figured with the CCC, they see it and there's a little more fear there with them losing.
Yeah.
Certain things possibly.
Yeah, yeah. No, you're 100%. Yep. Yep.
They'll say more than one regulated body involved. So.
Yeah, right.
Two, because we have us, the Board of Health.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Anything else under communications or anything?
I got nothing else.
Nothing? Okay.
I do have the minutes for November up whenever you.
We have minutes for November of 2023. After this, we have December left and then we're done with 2023.
These are so insanely long. 13 pages of minutes for this. Does anyone have any modifications? Paula and I had done our revisions. They're on here. No, make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
No, sorry. Make a motion to approve as they show on the screen. We didn't amend anything.
11/28/2023. All right. Motion was made with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And then we have minutes from.
Tuesday, April 23rd.
April 23rd, 2024.
Does anyone have anything? Make a motion to approve as amended, make a motion to approve. Sorry, I'm so used to saying that.
Does anybody have anything?
We did that for so long. Before Chantel, before you were here, Chantel, we literally used to do these during the meeting and go over them. So.
Second. So a motion's been made with a second to approve the April 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. So, yes, one more set for next, for last year, and then we're on to just our May and this meeting. So then we'll be, you know, caught up with the meeting minutes. Yay. And then also on the horizon is updating our fee schedule to be taken a look at. And also looking to update our, our rules and regulations. Right now it's called special permit rules and regulations, but we're just going to modify the name to just our board rules and regulations. And it deals with all of the administrative aspects for submissions. So it's like, please submit, here's a criteria, here's a list of all the things you need to submit and timelines and, and then fee schedules go in there as well. And those, the board can change at any time, just by majority vote of our rules and regulations. But they need to be updated. And as Chantel's been getting familiar with about what all the applications are, you know, we got to kind of update to the modern times about electronic submittals and things like that. So we can.
Yeah, we don't need 12 copies of things anymore. So, and I'm looking to at least pull out our fees from each individual, like special permit and site plan and smart growth and have it as a standalone fee schedule that'd be attached to the rules and regs. That way, we don't have to update multiple places. Good idea.
Yeah, the, the only problem with that is the fee schedule also has to be in the city code, I believe.
Yeah, we're going to have to do that.
Right. Which the council has to, the council has to approve our final fee schedule so that it gets published into the city code, I believe.
So one, one way, one way or the, we can, and but again, we can change it at any night, meeting night. We can.
Okay.
We can work on changing that. But we have to, the enforceable mechanism, and you can go through this with the city solicitor too, but the enforceable mechanism is the rules and regulations because it's in the ordinance.
Right.
That.
Well, it can still be a part of the rules and regulations.
Oh, yeah.
I just kind of want it on a, on its own page.
It could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we can publish it separately.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. But it can be just be any portion of it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Helpful. But, yeah. So we just want to make sure it's a, wherever it has to live to be adopted and enforceable.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So those are some of the things on the horizon. As you've heard, also with these other zoning amendments coming up too. So hearings and things about.
And MBTA 3A.
MBTA 3A is going to be a hot thing.
It has to be done by the end of the year.
Yes. Adopted.
Yep. And that's still being worked on. I'm looking to incorporate the, the way it's being worked is that it's going to be a portion of our smart growth district and 3A. And a part of Pittsburgh State will be the 3A. And then that will be incorporated with the smart growth. So we're working on the application, the design standards, mostly Liz has been spearheading it. And we're going to hopefully incorporate the administration portion of smart growth district and 3A into the rules and regulations as well.
That zoning, the, the zoning change petition for 3A and for smart growth, because we have to change our smart growth ordinance as part of all this because of what we did. Because it has to go through the public hearing process and because it has to go through three readings of the council, that needs to start probably after, by latest after the Aug, because the councils, the council doesn't meet in August.
Okay.
So you would assume it would have to start by September to have it done by the end of the year. I'm just guessing.
Yeah, that's a good estimate. Yeah.
So it, it's some, I mean, we don't have, there's not a tremendous amount.
I, I think we're getting towards the tail end of things. They were just, I think the contract with the consultants ending soon. So we're, we're getting at the tail end of things.
If you have a draft to share, you can send that along.
Okay. Yeah. I'll, I'll touch base with Liz and see what the most current one is.
Okay.
Definitely.
Should we consider scheduling one of those second meetings in October or something? Like rather than have that kind of discussion at the tail end of.
It's a good point because, so we're going to have multiple zoning public hearings. And then it's a question of, you know, do we have, let's say we have MBTA 3A, we have smart growth and our zoning changes, which you can all do kind of under the same umbrella. But it's a meeting that we got to have a public hearing for. I don't think there's going to be a lot of public speaking to it. But she's right, we got to have time to do it. So I don't know, we'll have to, I mean, that's one of the, like we talked about at the beginning, we scheduled, that's one of the reasons why we need a second date just to, in the, in the event we need it. So maybe October, maybe.
May, we may, you know.
Maybe October, November, we might need two meetings.
Maybe we'll need a early September meeting.
Right. Right. But it's something, you're right. Something to think about, Amanda. Definitely.
Well, it's tough when we have four public hearings and they're contentious projects. And then, then after all of that's done, then we have to talk about books, like book stuff.
Yeah, right. You, you have no, we have no brain for it that part. I hear you. I hear you.
Yeah.
So we talk about book stuff and then it also seems like that second meeting of just, we want to talk about some administrative things.
Yeah. Because honestly, I was like lost when we talked about zoning last time. And I was, now when I read the solar thing, I'm like, did, did we go over that? And I just breezed over it because it was like, let's go. It's time to go home. You know?
It's, it's a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot.
Look, it's only nine o'clock right now. Doesn't it feel like 11?
Yeah.
We do have, just on that note of.
These are guns.
We do have quite a few projects coming up. We have the Santander building, which will be in the next three to six months, most likely. Eventually, we have the Dickinson building. That's under agreement right now. And what was the other TIF? I forget, there was one other one that the council approved the other day that we hadn't done yet. There's two of them we had done. But in, one of them was Iver Johnson. The other one was the, the one we did about a year ago across the street, the 16 market rate units we did above the dentist's office there. But, but anyway, so we, we, there's stuff on the horizon that will almost certainly be coming forward.
All right. That being said, anything else? Get anybody for the, nope. You want information for next meeting for anything? Okay. Anybody make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 We're done.
Have a great one, guys.
Thanks, Alex. You too.